All right. Calling the March 2nd Pedaloma City Schools Board of Education Study Session to Order at 4:07. So first up is adoption and approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Do we have any comments from the public on, there's just one item, the equity study?
So we'll give about a minute with the chat. If anybody has a comment, please put it in the chat, or if anybody here who's in person and hybrid view, but will have a comment.
I don't know in the chat, but.
I mean, to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I see one. Okay, it looks like we have at least one comment from the public. And we'll leave the chat open for another minute or two in case anyone else has a comment. And while it's open, I'll read the public comment policy. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, "Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter." Looks like we have two comments. Okay, so first up is Rebecca Kagan.
Hi. Good afternoon, Joanna. How are you?
Yeah, how are you?
I don't really have a comment. I just wanted to say that the Mary Collins Cherry Valley Tide Team is here, and we're looking forward to hearing the report. So I don't have an official comment yet, but we're happy to be joining you.
All right, great. We're happy to have you. All right, next comment is, is that Renee Nealon?
Yeah.
Nelson Nealon?
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Joanna. Yes, we haven't heard of it, but thank you so much for putting this together so that we can hear from it, and we look forward to hearing the results.
All right, thank you for being here as well. Is that another comment? All right, Patty?
Sorry, I pushed the wrong button. I. Sorry.
So you don't have a comment?
No, but it's great to see everybody.
Yeah, you too.
All right. Thank you. All right. All right, so on to Aranda. That's the end of public comments, so.
And so I think it'd be just helpful just to frame just a little bit, and then we'll kind of turn it over. Turn it over to Tony, so if there's anything that I missed, Tony, you can feel free to jump in. I just want to start by talking a little bit about framing this, you know, what is this equity study? What does this even really mean? And I'm going to frame it with the mission statement of the district. So what we do as an organization, right, our mission statement is that Pedaloma City Schools delivers a high-quality, diverse, equitable, and inclusive education to all student scholars, so they creatively explore interests, collaboratively solve problems, and fully develop as resilient, caring, and responsible members of our community. When we look at the four big goals of our district, right, that we worked on, tweaked, worked on this summer, and came out and shared, the first goal is that all student scholars will experience an excellent, diverse, equitable, and inclusive education. Diverse, equitable, and inclusive education. And the district will, and there are eight objectives under there. Goal two, all student scholars will have rich academic options that meet their unique needs. And under five objectives, really measurable key objectives that we wanted to accomplish. Goal three, all student scholars and families will be engaged in their learning community. Four key objectives that we wanted to accomplish. And the fourth goal, that our district will enhance the long-term sustainability of our organization, infrastructure, and operations, with four key objectives underneath. If we look back up at goal one, that all student scholars, all student scholars will experience an excellent, diverse, equitable, and inclusive education, the very first objective there, number one, is that we will produce an equity study of our schools in order to address disparities. That's exactly why we have Aranda here with us this evening. I think it's also helpful to ground ourselves in our core values, because I think these come into play when we look at an equity study. So the core values of our district, we believe as an organization that all students have value, infinite potential, and the right to an excellent education. All students learn in a safe and caring environment where they are motivated to do their best work. All students reach high levels of achievement through rigorous and culturally relevant curriculum. Diversity is an asset that strengthens and enriches our learning community. Parents and caregivers are recognized and engaged as partners. The community supports the educational program and is engaged as a partner and a resource in student learning. District employees are dedicated to student success and operate as a high-performing collaborative team. And shared decision-making is valued, and active participation from all stakeholders is critical to student success. We started talking about the equity study. We started to talk about how important it would be, because a lot of this data tonight, or this afternoon, that we're going to look at, it's tough. It's hard to see this, especially, I've been in this district for 10 years. It's hard to see some of the disparities that we're going to look at today. And I think it's really important to ground ourselves in that mission statement and those core values and the goals. To me, the purpose of the equity study is to get an outside view. Sometimes it's, when I look at the data, I think, it's hard to even describe. It's like, I'm not surprised, but I'm shocked. Or I'm shocked or not surprised. I don't know how to say it. But it's hard to see the discrepancies. And so I just think we need to ground ourselves in the mission and the goals and our core values as we look at this. Having an outside view to help us make these systemic and sustainable change for our students is so important. This is about being data-driven, a data-driven district, to ensure that all students are receiving an equitable education. And the change is happening regardless of what we do. But knowing where we are allows us to ensure that we leave the system in a better place than where we found it. And you're going to hear this quote over and over tonight, it says, "Every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it gets." And we're going to keep hearing that over and over. Every system is perfectly designed to get the results it gets. So if we don't, whether we make a change or not, there's going to be an impact on students. And the last thing I would say before I turn it over to Tony is just that, when I think of the book Good to Great by Jim Collins, if you've read the book, there's some great stories in there. One of the things he talks about is that that in order to make some sort of change, you really need to face the brutal facts, the honest-to-goodness brutal facts. And we're now sharing out, here is the data, we're putting it all out there. And I don't want, people shouldn't take this personally. This is about the system. This is about changing a system. It's not pointed at any one individual or any calling out one school. It's about changing systems within our district. So I'll turn it over to Tony, who have any further comments?
Thank you, Matt. I think you summarized it well. I just want to kind of reiterate that this study started in November through December, and they finalized their report, and we're conducting this study session with the board and the public this evening. Like Matthew said, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to reflect and be intentional about our decisions as we move forward, so that at the end of the day, we do what's best and right and just for our kids that we serve here at Pedaloma City Schools. And with that, I'll turn it over to Aranda for them to introduce themselves, as well as to begin their presentation. And I just want to let everyone know that I believe we put the study, or we will be linking the study on the chat sometime. At least we'll try to, right? Okay, so we'll work on getting the link so everyone has access to the study this evening, as well as we'll also put it on our website for everyone to see as well. And with that, I'll turn it over.
And we're also recording this, the recording will also be on the website.
And I want to thank you, and I want to thank you for welcoming you into your district. It was wonderful visiting all the schools, and I think I got to actually see all of the schools, the light touches and the deep dives. Everyone was so gracious, and it was wonderful. It was a labor of love doing this. The evidence of the core values and the goals were, we saw it throughout the district. Now, are there some tweaks that could be made? Yes. We did see that too, and we're going to go through those. But that doesn't mean that we didn't see evidence that are still there and is there now. First, let me tell you who we are, and I'll introduce myself, and then I'll let Jeanette introduce myself. I'm Carly Marusik. I've taught elementary, middle school, high school. I was a high school principal and a district office administrator. All of us at Aranda and all of us that visited, all of your schools have been on the other side of Aranda, where Aranda came and visited us. We went through this process before and are pretty passionate about what we do. And Jeanette, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Jeanette Salinas. I've also been a teacher in the elementary setting and middle school, as well as principal, and definitely lived through this work as a teacher and then also as an administrator. And I'm really, really excited to be here. I enjoyed visiting schools and looking forward to sharing with you what the findings is.
As it says here, we want to thank you. The items outlined in this study, many of them are just one or two degrees off. They might have drifted that way over time, and once rectified, they will right and just for all the students that they serve. So we're going to go through a little exercise just to show, actually, you can see this?
There it is.
And we talk systems. We're going to talk systems over and over and over, because it's always systems. But we're just going to go through a quick little exercise just to show how inequities can blossom over the years and can pop up, how easy it is for it to get that one or two degrees off.
Okay, so we're going to look at a fourth grade example, okay? So you can tell we're teachers, because we're going to have you do a little activity right now, okay?
And we've heard that we have educators on the board too, so we're going to take you back in time.
All righty. So, fourth grade. Here is a fourth grade standard, RI 4.2. That's reading informational. Determine the main idea of a text and explain how it is supported by key details. Summarize the text. First, I'd just like you to think about that standard for a moment. What would that look like in the classroom? And wherever you have any room on piece of paper, jot down some of the things students need to be able to do. And how would we know students knew them in order to show mastery of this standard? So go ahead and do that right now. Okay? What would it look like in the classroom? Can you? Can you put that back up? Is it not there? No. Oh, okay, thank you. Is there any way to get bigger? Can we make it bigger? Sorry.
Can you make it bigger?
Okay. What would it look like in the classroom? What are some of the things students need to be able to do? And how would we know that they knew them to mastery? Okay, you have an elbow partner, correct? So, talk with your elbow partner. Talk about how your ideas maybe were similar, and then how are they different? So many questions. I know it is. Finish up your last sentence. Your last idea, your last thought.
So, but this is a standard.
Right.
So that means that it was.
So we looked at, we looked at that fourth grade standard, talking about main idea. Did, how many of you have some similarities that you talked about? How many of you had some differences? Yes. Okay, definitely, definitely. Okay, so now we've got, look at, above the fourth grade, we've got third grade. Determine the main idea of a text. Recount the key details and explain how they support the main idea. And then fifth grade, determine two or more main ideas of a text and explain how they are supported by key details. Summarize the text. Okay? So now, look at the progression of the standard with grade three, four, and grade five, the standard after. Now, talk with your partner. Is it clearer? Does it make fourth grade clearer? Does fifth grade make it clear what is required for fourth grade as well? Do the third grade and the fifth grade help you understand the fourth grade a little bit more? Go ahead and talk about that with your elbow partner. So we're talking about the fourth grade standard. Knowing above and knowing below.
I would say that the third grade should lead.
Does that help?
Lay the groundwork.
You understand fourth grade?
You know what I mean? Yeah, and so what are the things that is just the main idea, key details, and summarize. Okay, so.
Well, but it also doesn't explain how they support the main idea.
But isn't that fifth grade?
That's third, the first one. Fourth grade is determine the main idea, explain how it is supported by key. The other one is just the key detail.
Okay.
So. I think maybe the fifth grade one is more about how does it support the main idea, which is all about supporting writing.
Right.
And so that one would be, I mean, it's still the blocks, I can see that. I think that.
But you know, what that says to me is that there has got to be, just like what they've talked about a lot, was that. The third grade needs to understand the fourth grade standards, because they're laying the groundwork for this particular one.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Talking to your elbow partner, talking about what we just asked you to do. Were there similarities? Were there still differences? Were there differences? Yeah. So.
Differences between what our discussion or differences between the different standards?
Differences between what your thoughts were, how your interpretation.
We're both English teachers, so we're pretty similar. But you can't sit together.
But even amongst teachers, there are differences, correct? Yes. Well, we want to go into a little more detail. Let's see if this helps a little bit more. We're going to go to the items spec, so the item specifications. The item specifications are what, the S spec? So when we talk about the S spec, that is what the state of California uses. So of course, we're going to use that. So let's look at RI 4.2. This is fourth grade, what adjusts the main standard. And it says clarifications. So it says, "Items may assess a central idea and the details that support it in the text." Items will not ask students to summarize the entire text. Very specific. Items should require students to cite specific textual evidence to support ideas drawn from text or texts. And then it tells them, it says exactly what evidence is required. The student will determine a main idea in a text using supporting evidence. The student will summarize key details in a text using supporting evidence. Very specific. Then it will tell you what types of items will be used to ask students to show that evidence. So this is very, very specific on what is expected. Whereas if you look at the standard itself, we got very different things, correct? Yes.
Does this clear up any of the differences you might have had between one another? Does this answer any of those differences? Maybe, maybe not? No? Might have to.
Well, this is giving a level of specificity, where the other one, it's a little more open. It could be the whole text. This said, it will not, they will not be given a complete text to do that. So you know a little more, there's more parameters there. Yes.
It seems like it also, also, could you go back to? I don't know, but it seems like it also, in the clarifications, clarifies the difference between third and fourth grade, right? Because there's a difference between the detail supporting a central idea and supporting the summary, is that what it was, the main idea?
Yes. Where third grade, it's doing that, but then in fourth grade, they're going to have to summarize.
Right.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
And this is just one part of the item specification, just to show you just some of the detail that is allowed there.
Okay, so let's think back about the differences that you had from each other when you first started this. Just from the adult interpretation, it happens to everybody. The way that we interpret things, we interpret things differently, just by talking, just by looking at the standard, just like that. Okay, then, that's a difference. Then add them to the equation of students that are coming into class with different experiences in their life. More experience, less experience with this, just all different kinds of students that are at different levels. That's added, an added piece. And then looking at the content, the level of rigors that might be different across schools or different cultures of the schools, or different districts, or maybe this classroom to this classroom, there's different interpretations, even if it's in the same grade level, even if it's in the same content area. This is where, just by all those things, just even with us doing this right now, this is where the gaps of achievement occur. Not a fault of anyone, not that anyone's doing anything wrong purposely, but because there is not a level of specificity. So we're going to talk a little bit more about that, and we're going to talk about how we can do that. Okay, so thank you for playing along with us. All right? What we want to do, we have an X here. We say X marks the spot. That's where equity lives. If you look at those two lines there, we're looking at a graph. We're looking at how students are achieving. We can kind of guess what student group one line is and what group, student group the other line is, correct? We want to get to where the X is. We want, that's where, right, when we talk about gaps, that's X marks the spot, where they're all, they come together, and we cannot tell because they're moving forward together. And that's what we're going to focus on, okay?
We have some evidence too from the district. This is the, when we do the studies, and we did the studies, let me give some background for those that might know. We went to the deep dive schools, which we did three-day visits to. We did focus groups with all the teachers there. We did visits, shadowing students to see what was going on. We interviewed principals. Then we took all that data, triangulated it with years, five years, actually, some of it was 10 years, because we got extra data, longitudinal data from the student information system and public databases to find valid findings in there. This is part, this is the Smarter Balance test over a five, six-year period, actually, here. Actually, five years on here, we have six years on secondary. These are all the student groups on the trend of those who are meeting or exceeding. And what we look for is predominant student groups that have a gap. So then when we go and then we look at those and we follow those and see where that gap began. So what we found is between the white, students identified as white, and students identified as Latinx. You can see the gap in there. And then we also have a stretch goal, which are the students identified as non-socioeconomic disadvantaged students in the state of California. Your students identified as white throughout the district, with both elementary and we'll see both in secondary, are pretty close to that. Your students identifying as Latinx, there's a gap there. This is your elementary. You can see the gap is pretty persistent over there. We also see students learning English, students who are on an IMP down below. These are our secondary students. These are all the student groups on there. You can see, most of them are pretty predictable. There's a couple that are not. And also the number over here, because we want to see the number. Lots of times, the number of the students in the student group make them very volatile. So we also take that number in along with the percentage, which is why when we do the analysis and we break it down, we look for the ones that have the highest percentage. This is our secondary gaps. We put the 2021 here. 2021 should be taken with great caution, because it was not necessarily the same test. It was a short test. Testing conditions were not as ideal. It was the end of the pandemic. Some of them were at home, some of them were there. So there was a dip in the Latinx. That's, we're not sure if that's really a valid dip or not. Let me just say that. Say, definitely valid through 18, 19, that 2021. We're not necessarily sure on that. But you can see the gap is closed a little bit. It's definitely closing. Definitely still present though. Here we go with all the math in elementary. Asian is the top one. And then the one that just strips it down, so we can really see what's going on between. And then the one that just strips it down so we can really see what's going on between students identified as white and students identified as Latinx, students learning English and students on an I E P. Sometimes when we look at the ones that are like this one, sometimes it's what we call the wallpaper. We don't see everything. We see everything that's there. We have to strip back the different ones to see it or the numbers aren't as big. We still look at them and we look at them, we follow them in different ways, but we don't look at them all in one chart. And here's our secondary.
So I have, I have a clarifying question. I don't know whether I'm colorblind, but the two greens look the same over on the dotted part, the English learners and students with disabilities.
Look the same.
So I'm just wondering, is it, which one is the darker green?
The darker green is the students with disabilities.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
And then African American.
And they're so, they're so close together.
Yeah.
Gap you've identified on that chart there, that's about 25 points.
The one at the beginning or the one at the end?
Either. It doesn't look like it's changed much.
Not much.
No, yes.
It's close just a little bit.
Yeah. Just under 25 here, probably a little bit over 25 there. So what do we do about this? I'm going to talk about how to, how to, I'm going to turn over to Jeanette, so she talks about resolving.
Yeah, so what do we do? What do we do? That's what we, we all want to know, right? So it's looking at curriculum alignment, um, what we talked about and we went through that, that activity to exactly, so that we're all, where is our floor? We need to, um, you know, define what the floor is, that we're not going to go below, that we're all going to have that same level of rigor. When it comes across, not just out of school, but as the district. And what do we use? We use the S-SEC because that is a, um, something that.
It's a valid and reliable source outside of an external source that's, that's there. That has tested each year.
It just happens to be the S-SEC in California. Okay? And so, and the S-SEC is designed using the standards. So the good thing about that is we're not just looking at the standards. They went people, you know, all over the United States, teachers, different groups, work people in business, got together and created those standards so that, um, they have, we have a level of rigor. And they built on each other from kindergarten all the way up through, um, high school and then being college and career ready. That was what was put together. So how do we do that? We need to align. So we're going to use that, we're going to use our item specifications. And one of the things that we ask, um, teachers to do, we bring them together for a summer institute. We create formative assessments using that of the item specifications. It's of the teachers, by the teachers, for the teachers, because they will know exactly what it is that is in there. With facilitation along the way and creating those assessments and then through the years, um, we go through and backwards plan and teach and check formatively. Did they pick up what I was putting down? So much along the way. We create, uh, what we say is a nested data system. You know, those nested tables that we have that fit into each other? That's exactly what we suggest. We start, the teachers are going to, with their students, they have to differentiate, they need to support their students all different levels. And they're going to do that. Who supports the teachers? The site administrator. And they're the head teacher in charge. They will have, um, the training as well and they support the teachers. And then who supports the, the site administrator? The upper admin. And they will support all the schools. So we work with the nested data system. And I can, can't say enough, system, 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 because that's what needs to be put in place. It's not a person, it's not one person's job, it's the system that we put down so that as we're going through, we catch things, we find things, we discuss it. And we figure out what are we going to do to help every student achieve?
So the, you know, if it's always yours, where's the floor?
Okay.
So every, every grade has the same content rigor?
Yeah. So everybody has the same, um, level of rigor. They know what it is. There, there it is, across schools. So if a student is at this school and moves to another school in the same, we're, they're going to be on the same page. We know what the level of rigor is and that's why that system needs to be, we say, a different place.
I agree. Because if they go from elementary to junior high and to high school and that gap is there, then it's that compounded interest. It gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And what happens when that happens? They get Ds and Fs in junior high or high school and they're not placed in college prep or advanced coursework in high school. But worst of all, they stop view, viewing schools as a positive place and they lose hope. And that, that's, I think, the worst thing of all when schools don't see, students don't see school as a place of hope. Um, and I think the one thing that shows that, um, on here is your A through G over the year. At A through G, you know, it's sure, C S U, the U C C S U, um, criteria, but it's an indicator of the premium education, of high quality reverse education. Now, you can see that the, um, students, non, the California State Stretch here, students identified as white here, um, and students identified as Latinx. Now, inside the other report, there's some structural barriers that I think that will raise that pretty quickly, um, within your district. As far as just prerequisites to certain courses and a few other things that are just more technical things. So I think that will, will raise pretty quickly because of that. But also, um, guidance alignment is one thing that makes sure that it raises. Just like progress monitoring is done by curriculum alignment, every five or five times a year. Guidance alignment is done five times a year with the guidance alignment staff or guidance staff. But it helps, what about secondary students who get to math three and want to stop after one semester? Or they're in lower level courses, they're not in college prep courses and they slip out. You want to make sure that no one falls through the cracks. You want to make sure that everyone, the A through G is, is that, that first and foremost, um, shouldn't be hitting this when there's microphones and I know better than that. First and foremost, course is studied that they go for. That, that's what they're going for most of all. You don't want to fall through the cracks, you want them connected to school, you want them to have that affiliation. So guidance alignment is a proactive system. Like I said, a progress monitor five times a year is with the counselors and the guidance administer, guidance administrator. It looks for A through G courses that they're enrolled in, A through G courses that they've had in the past, um, what their schedule is. Um, common assessments in junior high. It looks for discipline, fast book completion in 11th grade, um, completing a college app in the 12th grade. And it just, it also includes research now that the counselors go through together and look at, helps just to change the mindset lots of times, just looking at different things for the future. Because there's different changes that have happened at colleges since 10 years ago, 15 years, even five years ago. Especially with the work that's being done in our state with community colleges and the Cal States and the UCs. And they make agreements and they talk together about what agreements are they going to make before the next time? They work together to do things more as a group instead of individually. How can we work smarter and not harder? How do we work as a group to present some of our information instead of having to meet with every student like this? They learn together. Promote is a system that we have that makes the data easily accessible. It tiers the data, it makes it easy to read. So you can pull it and see what students need to hear this information that I need to tell them. So I could tell them all at once. Like I said, research is reviewed and collaborative solutions that are impactful are discussed by the counselors.
Okay, we, we want to build a strong equity muscle. What does that mean? The nested, um, data system, support system is something that will help that along the way. But an equity muscle, building your equity muscle is really looking at, focusing in on the student. Focusing in on the, the students themselves and, and what, if it's with a principal going in classrooms, you're looking to see with a student lens. Looking to see, um, rather than what we normally do is, um, are the standards up or is there, uh, how is the setup in the room? It's like, what kinds of questions are being asked? Where are the students sitting? How, you know, how many, you know, who's being called upon? It's things like that. It's, um, really building that equity muscle and looking through the lens of the student. So with that, we would do the nested data system, working with the teachers, having the curriculum alignment, uh, meeting, uh, five times, uh, looking at the data after they've given the assessment. Making agreements on what we can do as a group, as a grade level team or a course alike team. And then following those agreements and seeing, did the students pick up or did it work? What can we do next time as we go through? Doing that five times a year. Admin supporting the teachers along that way and then the upper admin supporting the schools. Principals support teachers and counselors, district office support schools. And then also, one of the biggest things is really, um, supporting the admin, um, through admin power clinics where, um, we help. Because the admin are the ones that support the teachers. So we always go through everything with the admin first before we do anything with teachers. And so that's what, because they're the ones that support them. And then instructional coaching and learning walks, calibrating our eye, um, all together on things to look, how to look for with a, a student lens. And these are, this is how we build our equity muscle. So we believe, and as you do as well, every student is entitled to a premium education, only some currently receive.
And we know that you are going to have lots of questions because we know that you've got the post study earlier. So we wanted to make sure that we have lots of time open for all of your questions to take where you went. Because if we went through the post study, you wouldn't have time for questions.
So you want them, you want them now?
Yeah. You're going to go.
Yeah, I just, um, so I'm a bit confused actually.
Okay.
Uh, because I did, you know, go over the, the larger deck that you had forward to us earlier, which appears to have a lot of meaty information that warrant discussion. Um, I, I mean, it can't, probably can't be done in two and a half hours' time. But then I'm also confused by what was just presented. You know, you talk about, in the assessment, you, you show clearly, uh, where we have, um, uh, gaps, achievement gaps based upon ethnicity. The systems, the, the problems with the systems that you just described, that the lack of specificity would result in wider variance in, in outcomes across the board. But the assessment you have of our students and their outcomes is that that wide variance isn't random, it's associated with ethnicity. And so it's not just a system thing, there's something else behind it. It's not that our, there's a lack of specificity, there's also a bias in, in how, how those things are applied. That's why we're getting the results that you showed us. So I want you to speak about what you learned of, you know, about the bias that may be here.
Well, and real quickly, just piggybacking on that, there's a quote that I wrote that I found in there. Demographics are determining outcomes. And I think that really jumped out at me, especially when I was looking at our more vulnerable schools compared to our least vulnerable, I mean, demographics of those schools. So I, I, yeah, so my question is the same as Sheldon's.
Same as his. The more vulnerable schools, and it is almost exactly the same. They don't have the background experiences as many of the other students when they're coming to school. And many of the other, they face more challenges when they come to school. So when there isn't a floor and when there isn't that additional support that those students provide, that's when gaps start to occur. And that's when gaps start to occur. And the socio economic disadvantaged students, I should pull up the one, almost directly overlay your Latinx student line. It's almost exactly the same when you look at the, the one chart with the S-SEC. It's very, very close on there as far as their scores on there. So a lot of it is the challenge that, challenges that they face before they come in that they bring with them to school, many of those students. So that's oftentimes what leads to the gaps when they first come in is the, they don't have a floor that they bring everyone up to. They lean down to remediate where students are when they come in. So they meet students where they are instead of bringing them up to the floor. Did I make that clear enough or is that?
I, I certainly don't disagree with that. I mean, our students are, you know, their ability to learn is a function of how well their lives are going. And how well our lives are going are, is not equally distributed across our student population. Totally agree with that. But there's, I think there's more here. It's also a function of how, how we as the adults interact with our students. Um, I think it showed up in some of the quotes that you found in your site visits and, you know, so there, I, I totally believe, I totally recognize and thank you for identifying the system's contribution to this. And I also acknowledge that there are home life issues contributing to this. But I also want to recognize that there are adult issues that are contributing to this too.
Right. And we, we've talked before about, um, like marrying behaviors and attitudes to change the district, right? Like we're doing positive behavioral intervention systems to address behaviors and then we don't really have anything to address the attitude. And like, I understand that you looked at the most more, but as what you identified as the more vulnerable schools. McDowell, um, San Antonio, Carpe Diem, Sonoma Mountain High School. But then you're talking about like A through G outcomes, which is high school. And those were identified as least vulnerable. But just based on what's in this, like in these 95 pages, the slides, like, aren't those students vulnerable as well? I mean, there was so much information here about our A through G outcomes. Can you talk more about that?
I'm not sure if I got the question right as far as the vulnerable students that move up through to A through G or.
Right.
Well, they're vulnerable there. The, um, and let me address first as far as the beliefs to, we, we do deal with beliefs a lot, but we believe, that you change behavior, change outcomes and then people will change what they believe. Because to start changing what people believe and address that well straight on usually doesn't change what they believe. But when you start changing what students can do and how students' outcomes are, and then they start seeing it, then they change what they believe. And I've seen that in my schools and we've seen that over and over and over. That when they start seeing that they didn't believe it before and then the students are producing at different levels, higher than what they expected, they're producing at the floor, they're producing whatever. Then attitudes and beliefs start to change. And that's just what we believe in our organization.
I think though that some of those attitudes and beliefs, um, get in the way of allowing those students to achieve at the level that we think they should be able to. So I, I think one, one compounds the other.
And that's why we build equity muscle around so that everybody within the system is on the same page. Or at least more, you have that, um, more R than not. So it builds more and more.
But when we're looking at quotes like Hispanic kids don't go to four year colleges, like that's an, that's an attitude, right? If someone, that is a direct quote, right? Hispanic kids don't go to four year colleges. It's not a behavior per se, that's an attitude, I think initially.
And, and it's a falsehood. I mean, Sonoma State is, Sonoma State is a Hispanic serving institution, San Francisco State is a Hispanic serving institution.
But once they start to see that they're going, they start doubting, they start seeing it and it starts pointing it out in different ways within the system and the system changes. I mean, that's.
But then how do you get them there if they're not even A through G, in A through G classes? Like we saw all this. Can you talk about the A through G data that you saw, that you found?
The A through G data? A through G data, you know, my opinion of where your A through G data should be? You're a 65% of district. And I think once those, those barriers and everything are out of the way within a couple of years. And I think once those barriers and everything are out of the way within a couple of years, within three years, you'll be nearly up there.
When you talk about barriers, are you talking about like gatekeepers that keep kids out of honors classes or A through G classes?
Some of, some of the ones as far as keeping them out of chemistry, keeping them out of some of the other, some of the other prerequisites. There's a slide that says some of that, and just, just opening them up more classes that way.
So then, what about elementary? I mean, it seems like there is a, you know, there's kind of an attitude, or, and I don't, I didn't, I wasn't. I have to say I got overwhelmed by the data, and that's what I hoped to get today. It seems like the kids get on to a certain path, and it doesn't change.
Would it be helpful to go through the data slide so we can at least have a conversation?
So that people, at least in the audience, know what we're talking about. They don't know what we've seen.
I think that's the same. I think we need to go through the slides.
And then just to kind of reiterate, I think what we're trying to get at is, what we're seeing is that partly due to, to the belief systems that we have as an organization, as a whole, generally speaking, as an organization? Or does, does the data we're seeing contribute to how people think about what we're seeing in the data? Does that make sense?
Can you say that again?
So, for example, we noticed that like our Latinx students aren't succeeding. So therefore, that creates a belief system that kids can't succeed because that's what we're seeing. Or we have it in our minds that those kids can't succeed, and the data justified it because we believed that. So somehow it can, it's, the belief system is contributing to the data, or the data is reinforcing the belief system.
I think it's both.
We, the way that we work, when we put the system in phrase of alignment, and we all align, we all have a level of rigor that we're all working toward that we don't go below. And we meet regularly, and we discuss this. Once, the data comes up every time, and we follow the different groups of students that are the groups within that school. And we work together as a team on how will, what conditions do we need to put in place for the student to be successful? And we keep saying those things over and over where we can help them as a team grow. And we're working together, it's not this teacher over here, this teacher over here. And as we go through that, that cycle of each, each unit, we start to see students achieving. We start to see that as a group, and we're building, we're helping each other as a team. It's not just my students, it's our students. That begins to change people's views and belief systems because it's happening before their eyes.
And I think, I think you're, we're jumping, you're, we're kind of jumping to next steps. We're like, here's the solution. We want, we got, first, we want, I think we got to go through the data.
Because, because we've already, we've seen the data, and we keep hearing, oh, we get the equity study, we can start addressing these things. But I, I don't know if we fully have talked about everything that you have.
I know, I know, it's, it's a lot of slides, but I think it would be helpful to just start, go up to the beginning. Let's go through the slides and ask questions along the way. And then if we don't, if we run out of time, we run out of time, we have, we can start to talk about the next steps afterward. We need to go, we need to get through the data.
Kayla, were you going to say something?
I think we'll start from the beginning. And yeah, some of the slides will be a little quicker than us.
And just for, you know, for your sake, understand that the folks online haven't seen this. And, and us here, we've only seen it for three days or so.
That's my fault, I misunderstood.
Was it dropped?
Okay. This is just about parents of Petaluma City Schools from federal government as far as census data. So it relates to the whole area as far as median income of 109,332, 41% with college degrees, and 6, 7% below the poverty level. So it just kind of gives a general census view as far as the area and the demographics. The vulnerabilities today, I believe you saw that at one of your board meetings originally, as far as tiering the schools based on the vulnerability study. With the most vulnerable at the top with McDowell, all the way down through the less vulnerable, and then the least vulnerable. And again, how the vulnerability study, with the contextual factors as far as the poverty, free and reduced lunch, violent crime per thousand, college degree in the area, English learners, students on an IEP, other factors as far as how is vulnerability determined?
I like the methodology. It's very clear.
And it's been proven, district over district over district, to be a valid term. Just the demographics of 2021 of all the districts as far as the students, the teachers, and the support staff. You see, 34% students identified as Latinx, 55% students identified as white, and the rest in between, a variety of others. 89% of the teachers are identified as white. This gets a little deeper as far as the demographics of the students. 52% male, 48% female. We can see 10% are learning English, and this shows what year they are as far as learning English. 33% or 224 students are zero to three years. Four to five years are 20%, and 47% are six years plus as far as learning English. 15% students on IEP, and 40% socioeconomically Spanish.
Can I?
Yeah, jump in.
You can jump in anytime.
I'm just, just clarifying that that's, that's not age, that's the amount of time that they have been identified as English language learners. And we have six-plus years, 315 students that have been identified as English language learners for six-plus years. Yes.
In our, in, in the system, the US school system, US schools.
In US schools? Oh, this is in ours?
No, it is.
This is ours.
Okay.
So, so for example, they may have been two years in Nevada and four years here. They're now in our students, but they've been overall the US system.
So, yeah, okay. Is, is the, is the problem that we're not identifying and reclassifying them? Or is the problem that they aren't learning English? Because I know that sometimes it's a reclassification issue.
So if they're, one of the things that you want to do when they're looking at English learners in the elementary, is you want them to reclassify in five years. So the longer it takes to reclassify, the more difficult it is to reclassify.
Okay, that's my, that's my problem.
And this is just the change in demographics between students identified as Latinx and students identified as white over the past 10 years. And it doesn't look like that big of change when you look at it as far as the line graph. But when you look at it, the proportion of the population, about 10% other is not shown on here. But it used to be 69% students identified as white. Now it's down to 55% students identified as white. So there's some changes in pedagogy that need to happen within the classroom. And we also have, if this goes with the next slide, yes, it does, a very best-in-staff, particularly in secondary. Over three-quarter of the secondary teachers have been here 15 years or longer. And over half the elementary teachers have been here 15 years or longer. So you keep your teachers a very long time.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, there's a story there.
But as the student population, it's changing, we want, we want, that's changing. So we need to look at our pedagogy and how we're changing there as well.
Make sure they're prepared to handle the changes.
And then what you found with leadership, let me see up here.
I'm sorry.
If you go back to the previous slide in the top left, just to discuss what you're.
Oh, the, we have some, oh, yeah, district offices, new principals. We have some new principals, 10 schools had two principals in the past five years, four schools had one. They aren't having long-term principals at the site. So there's some new principals across the district. So long-term teachers and some relatively new principals. Whenever you see the pie chart and quotes, the pie chart is coming straight from the survey that was given. And they should have looked at the end, with the end, when it says my dream school, it has the N on that slide. And the quotes are from either interviews or the survey. So this is the professional development that they found impactful over the last four years. Last few years, not the survey four. 47% of them found it most definitely.
This is looking at our English learners, and if you see if they're on track, meaning that when we look at our English learners, we want them to move up a level every each year. So the numbers they're giving are following the number of years of students that move up each year. So they're on track. When you see the yellow is when they didn't, and then when they get into the red, that means they haven't moved over a level. So the red are the on watch, or the students that are not on track because they are not continuing to move forward, even the, well, now it's the on top.
So we just need to try another strategy. So it just signals to us that we need to try another strategy with those students to get them to learn English. So what we're doing might not be working, or might not be as effective as it needs to be.
So whatever our ELD program is, or whatever, you know, the students are in the green, it's working for them. So then you need to do something a little bit different for the ones that are not.
An alternative education, we did a nice summary, just a summary of the different alternative education. You provide a nice safety net for students that are not necessarily fitting in to the comprehensive high schools. You have the two small continuation schools with Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain. And then the larger continuation school at San Antonio and the independent study school at Valley Oaks. Provides a number of teachers, FTEs, and some other information about them, just in comparison there. I'm sure probably knew much of that already.
I have a question about this. Have you seen other continuation schools in like your other work that did have A through G coursework?
I've seen some that have them, that, some of them don't have it all the way, they don't have the lab coursework, but they have some, the recommendation to Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain was to start at least getting their English and social studies, A through G. I went through 100 transcripts from both of the high schools. And the challenge is if students go back to the high school, that to become A through G, they don't stand a chance of it. So the lab sites, yeah, that's a challenge. But English and social studies, if they can have English and social studies, and I'll tell you, watching the instruction in there and the level of it, there's no reason why, why they shouldn't, they're using the same textbooks, and it was very strong instruction we saw. Because I visited both of those schools. But if they could have that on their transcripts when they went back, making up the other courses that perhaps had a D or they didn't pass, making up to become A through G eligible is at least feasible. Without that, if they go back after a year, it's not feasible. I don't know if I answered your question or answered more.
Yeah, I guess.
I'll zip it now, Matthew.
That was great.
Okay.
It's nice to hear your experience in the school and what you're seeing as, as compared to other districts that you write.
This shows the demographics of all four as different compared to the district down here. This one breaks out San Antonio a little bit because we did hear that San Antonio was a school for male students of color. So we wanted to dig a little deeper in that. It did have more, and let me go back to here. You can see there's more blue there, which is Latinx. They did have a few more continuations in the state typically have 75% male and 25% female. That doesn't make it all right. But that's, that's where it was. We compared it to Sonoma County on this one, which matches the county. Again, that's not making it all right. But we wanted to see if it was outside the realm. We did hear that from probably five different people at different locations.
They said it was four male students? You said that people said it was four male students of color?
They said it was becoming a school for males of color.
San Antonio?
San Antonio.
So completely.
But we didn't find, and actually, there were more girls there than I expected for a continuation. Having been at other continuations. This just outlines the resources that are allocated there. You do allocate quite a bit of resources to alternative ed, which is nice so they get the time and support they need for those students to have success. Petaluma Accelerated Charter School, now I have to watch what I say here. No, I don't, we just want to congratulate them from the US News. I, I will say from being in there, I've never seen such excellent instruction. I could have stayed in there all day long. I don't know if you visit the schools, but make sure you go out to Paxton, stay in those classrooms, they're just amazing. It would be nice to replicate that everywhere, I'd like to take it back with me.
That's exactly what I was thinking, that's what I want to see replicated.
Yes, I'd like to replicate it and take it back with me. It was just, it was fascinating, it was just amazing. They were, they were, we did do a roster check to make sure that the students in there were coming from the district, and they were coming from the district first before they were taken outside the district for all five years. Just in case you wondered. Lots of quotes in here, we don't need to. We went through the S-BAC.
Did you see how the student teacher ratio compared to other middle school in our district?
How, Paxton?
Yeah.
It's 26 to 1, it's lower.
As far as?
Well, I mean, they're 26 to 1. What is our 32 is max? I'm just wondering, did you look at class size?
I mean, look at that.
So is class size even calculated in that?
It is on some of the others as far as the other classes and things, but as far as factoring Pax.
I think they're 32, 32 to 1 right now. Yeah, they all have 32 kids, 32 students in the box.
I thought that it was four.
They do, it is. Yeah, so.
See, and when we do secondary roster checks and things like that, if we look at that, that Pax didn't have any, any dis, they were all within, they didn't come up on the roster checks, so. The vulnerability index, we shaded the S-BAC scores, this is the English for 2019. You'll note that McKinley is out of order. It comes before the green one, so it actually is beating the odds as far as demographics there. So that one is, demographics say that it should be below the green, so McKinley is beating the odds.
I don't, I don't see that here.
I went through the S-BAC because we looked at them.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I'm sorry, I probably should have told you.
That's okay, I'm a little slow.
I think you looked at them before, and they're not the most exciting charts. I mean, the point of them, the point of the area. McKinley here, because it would usually go green, yellow, red, as far as that takes in the, in fact, all the contextual factors around it. Crime, the poverty level, things that directly. On math? Different order. Okay, we looked at the impact of current practices as far as labeling and sorting, and actually, this might be in. They have the new one, right? They changed, they have the new depth? Yes, okay. I moved this like two, two slides up. Shoots and ladders, the game that we play when we're younger, some get shoots and go down, and some get ladders and go up. And that's what we consider some of the things. And that's what we consider some of the things that happen in our schools, unintended consequences of systems. We don't think that anyone does it on purpose. We think that things are, their people are well-intended, things happen within the system, but that's what ends up happening. That's what, we were talking about gate earlier when you were asking. That's what we think happens with gate here. Cogad is given to all third graders annually, not exactly proportional. P C S students identified by gate, here's the proportion here. Seventy-eight percent students are white compared to the fifty-five percent from the district.
Do you know anything about that test we use or assessment?
You talked about it being culturally involved and I did some research on it. It's one of the best ones as far as being culturally relevant.
Oh, okay. But yet.
If there are other indicators that can be used as well, I think that's the only indicator being used.
Being used, but then again, we didn't find, we didn't find gate being used for placement. We didn't find it being used for other ways that were shoots and ladders. So we're going to say here that gate is disproportionate and then we're going to leave it at that. This is one of the things there and go on to other things if that's all right.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't, doesn't indicate, it doesn't impact students' outcomes other than that.
Except for where the students identify.
Can you talk about where there, where statewide the percentage of students identified is?
Yeah, statewide, gate is six percent for Latinx and nine percent for students identified as white. So there, there's a gap statewide, but it's not the seven percent and two percent.
It's not as pronounced as what you have here.
I just think if you look at, I mean, it's just a glaring example here. If you look at McDowell. Zero, zero, zero. That, that is, I mean, that's statistically impossible. Like we, it's, it's, it's the way that they're being assessed is off. Like six percent of, in California, students that have Latinx tested for gate. That statistically, we can't, that, there's, there's something wrong with the way that, that it's happening. But again, to the, to the overall point, gate is just a label. It's an, it's an identification and it's not, there's nothing done with that anymore in our district.
Then why do we do it?
The accelerated program is just, there's no, it doesn't, you don't have to be getting identified to be part of the program.
To get into Pax?
No, no.
No, they weren't using it anymore because we dug into that too. The one thing I will say is morale, because we were at McDowell when it came in and they thought for sure one of their students was going to be identified and one of the teachers was in tears.
Oh, yeah, that's what I see.
So there is a morale aspect to it, so. I mean, it's not the student.
Well, valley vista is pretty low too.
Yeah.
Zero?
Well, all the schools, all the schools except one are falling below the state average.
So there, there is.
For Latinx.
There is a morale aspect, but as far as student outcomes, there was, because we checked into Pax and we actually overheard teachers talking to students where they were going to go the following year. As far as Pax, we heard that this teacher talking to a student, they said, no, gate has nothing to do with it. So we heard conversations, we dug in the artifacts, so we heard it validated in several different ways.
So if we're not using it, why give it?
The secondary roster check is the one thing I mentioned earlier. We looked at all the different sections, all the different courses at all the junior highs and high schools to see were there any courses where there was ten percent difference from the students identified as Latinx schoolwide compared to those in those courses. What's interesting, I think, at all, the junior highs, Pax didn't have any, Pax was, I think because of their structure, but they didn't have any, they weren't in there, is student government leadership, A S B is at all of them. So the ones that have the student voice at all the junior highs and high schools, you can see identified up there the, the difference. So McKinley worth forty-two percent Latinx, but they only have fourteen percent in their student leadership. Twenty-five percent recon, they're close. That would have been fifteen percent and they wouldn't have been caught at fourteen percent there. Or Pax, I think, put up there. And then the high schools were there. So you can see. Nine percent.
How are they placing kids at Cherry Valley? It's accelerated, I think you know.
How are they placing them accelerated?
At Cherry Valley.
Different ways at different schools.
Really? That's a problem.
Different ways at different schools.
Okay.
There was no system for placement.
There's a, they're, they do, I believe they all take the M D T P.
Okay.
Which is a math, it's a math placement test.
Oh, okay.
Out of Berkeley, UC Berkeley. But. And the rea, the reason Pax is not here is because everyone is in that same course. So there's no, there's no differentiation. Whatever the statistics of the school, that's the statistics of students who are taking it. Everywhere else, there's a, there's an assessment, right, to take, get into an accelerated math course. And the students are placed into the math course, I believe, depend upon the scores of the M D T P. So that's a gatekeeper, that's a gatekeeping tool right there.
In fact, one thing that jumped out at me when you talked about ensuring A through G access, that students are directed, not invited. And that makes a huge difference.
And then when you look at the high schools, both the English nine honors at both of them, and that's your foundation to later advanced coursework. If you're going to go into AP coursework later, you need that English nine honors, that advanced.
Disparities.
But the fact that these were, I mean, this is not a whole lot of courses.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, we can see this and we can see it at the, I mean, there's a good and there's a bad here. Some schools, I mean, I would have twenty courses listed down there. I mean, that's not.
It's not what? Sorry, you, you were saying it's not?
I'm, I'm saying it's something to look at, but to have three courses and two courses per school is a good thing. I mean, it's something to focus on, something to work on and something to fix. It's not twenty courses per school.
Yeah, you're not watching this.
Yeah.
Well, we do at the high school, right, with the AP?
High school's on there too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the next one has advanced math courses, which, you know, are within there, but I mean, they're, they're closer.
What are those color codes?
The thirty percent at Pedalum High School is, is above the Latinx.
The statewide. Or no, sorry.
The schoolwide.
Yeah.
And then the red means it's.
The red means that, that that's a good course to get kids into and that's something to watch.
I mean, it's like Matthew was saying before, it's like not like shocked, but still irritated by this information. I mean, we've seen this, like when we talk about LCAPs and the SIPs and the SARCs and. I guess, I mean, I'm sure we'll talk about it at some point, like solutions to some of this, you know?
And again, here's just some surveys and some comments here. And this is the, one of the most important thing, when my twins get the same education, that's calibration across that we were talking. And then the next one with sections is the one when you talk about calibration. And if you look at that first one, that English nine, nineteen percent is the average D F rate for all sections. So if you have ten sections, say you have ten sections, the minimum D F rate in one of those sections is thirteen percent. And then the maximum in another one of those sections is thirty-two percent. These are high schools now when you think of that.
And this is all of our high schools?
Yes. So you can see why kids want one teacher more than another.
Yeah. Sorry, could you explain? What's that sixty-five percent for Latinx?
That's for Latinx kids. So in that English nine, which is nineteen percent an average for everyone in there, the average for Latinx in nineteen, in English nine is thirty percent D N F rate. The lowest one is twenty percent D N F rate and the highest one is sixty-five percent of section.
Those, so those are different teachers?
Teachers in the same section, yes.
Same course.
Did, did you compare, like, I know that kids are scheduled by their, sometimes by their electives, that there's only like one.
A singleton.
Yeah, and so would that account for some of this in terms of, you know, like if they were in any L class?
We just looked at all the sections, all the sections of English nine regardless, so whether they had another, a singleton elsewhere or whatever. So looked at all of them.
Yeah, because they take a little bit of.
Looked at the lowest one and the highest one. And then filtered out and looked at all the Latinx in those, looked at what they had and looked at all the students identified as white and looked at what they have. And looked down. Physical science, overall twenty-eight percent average. One teacher had three percent D N F rate in her section and another, and I don't know if it's a her, that was just. And another one had a seventy-one percent D N F rate in that section.
Jeez.
That's a ninth grade class. Shouldn't get on my soap buffer here, but again, having hope when you go to school with ninth graders to make sure that they connect to school.
So that's where the calibration is the level of.
And guidance alignment.
And guidance alignment.
Yeah. You see my passion in my high school, my high school background come out here.
So when you say guidance alignment, like for these stats, like, can you give an example of what that would look like?
On that, they would look at that and they would start having conversations with the counselors and the guidance administrators as far as what could be done, how could conversations be had, what needs to be done to calibrate that across? Is it curriculum alignment that's being done? And then also the conversations, the gracious conversations that are held to make people want to ensure that they're having grade books the same, you know, are they, are they scoring their, their tests the same amount? You know, are, are their assessments the same? Is their final the same weight? Is their assessment the same? You know, what, what are they doing the same? You know, once you start having their, the departments or the course alike, that physical science or whatever course it is, start having common grading parameters, it gets closer and closer to not having the wild thing. And you get the wild thing or whatever, you know, that wild of a range. Different collaborative solutions, you know, and they're localized because every school and every district is different, has different situations. So it's not one pat solution that works everywhere, but that's one that oftentimes for this, this kind of range oftentimes works.
So guidance, the guidance helpers and the guidance, it is a team that would work as a team rather than individually, just like the teachers would work as a team. And then those be near each other to help students. So we're catching up everywhere.
There's a great quote.
Graduation. I mean, that's that black line in the middle is that California stretch goal. Your students identified of white are right above it, not students identified as Latinx. Still have a good rate, they can get better, they can get up above that. So a good rate though. This one, the black one is the total students in that cohort. That cohort starts in ninth grade. If students move away and they have a place where they've actually moved to another high school that's documented, they get taken out of that cohort, the students move to the school, they get put in that cohort. So it goes from ninth to tenth to eleventh to twelve. You have that big cohort. So that's what that black line is, it's that cohort. Then that white bar is the number that graduated out of that cohort. That's where you get your graduation rate. And then that maroon bar at the end is a number out of that cohort and that graduation rate that are A through G. So you can see the rates at the bottom there. That's district line. I'm going to go to the next page that shows students identified as white and students identified as Latinx. So you have a ninety-four percent graduation rate for your students identified as white and an eighty, eighty-one, thank you, my lines are not going, eighty-one percent graduation rate for your students identified as Latinx. And a fifty percent A through G rate for your students identified as white and a thirty-two percent A through G rate for your students identified as Latinx.
Drop out rate.
Drop out rate, two percent for eight students for students identified as white, seven percent for nineteen students for students identified as Latinx on the bottom. A little bit of disparity there. We looked at the next page and a gap analysis already.
So what I'm seeing here is, is for all students, we're, we're below the statewide average for A through G.
Your students with how they perform on AP, how they perform on the S-BAC, how they, all their other performances are sixty-five percenters.
So do you think that this, this A through G rate equates to the fact that so many of our students go to the junior college?
I don't think so. I think there's, I think that might be some of it, but I don't think, I think there's other reasons perhaps.
Because you, you mentioned several times, this is comments about that there seemed to be a, I don't know, a stress or a culture about against four-year school. And I, you know, just having taught in the district and been in the district and given the. There, there was always a, you know, this Santa Rosa J C is an excellent school.
Yeah.
And you can transfer anywhere from there. And so a lot of the students that was kind of, you know, you could save money if you're here, we have the Pedalum campus. So I was just, it seems like that's part of that mindset that's been around for a long time, so.
And they have the Jump Start Santa Rosa or Jump Start?
Yes.
I think that is, I think that, I don't think that's bad at all. I think there just needs to be more education on that because there's certain programs that they can get into that guarantee that they'll transfer. And kids aren't taking advantage of that program and a few other things that go on. It's just, I think that's the recommendation is to grill a market, all of their options and make sure that they know, they know how to read the.
Exactly, exactly. And A through G doesn't necessarily have to be related to going to a four-year school.
No.
No, that's.
There's also at the J C, they have the Doyle Scholarship, so.
Yeah.
Financially, a lot of kids get a lot of help.
Yeah.
They get their books, their tuition, so it's a very attractive, and it is one of the best junior colleges.
Yeah, no, it, it is. It's just, we always kind of push kids to look at everything because there's so much financially left on the table too. And I know that a lot of the kids up here don't necessarily qualify for a lot of it, but they do for out of state. And so it's, it's just to explore all the options, not, and not say that that's a bad one, but that's one of them. Let's look at everything, you know, and that's, and be prepared for everything. And the students that, they've done studies, the students that go to the J C that are A through G do better at the J C and are the ones that transfer too.
That's true.
Yeah, it's just, and if they go straight to work, they have the critical thinking skills. If they go into the military, they take the odds up and they get their choice of better jobs. So I mean, it's just, it's just having that higher level of education, simply using it as an indicator.
So do you think part of it is if kids are going, well, I'm just going to go to the J C so I don't have to worry about taking A through G?
And it's part of the counselor's response, that's what we do to guidance alignment too. It's like, well, let's talk about that some more. You have to talk me out of that class and not, you know, have your mom call me and let's talk about whether you transfer out of that Math Three class or not. You know, it's, it's dealt with that all the time. It's like, oh, this class is getting too hard. I don't, I don't need to stay in Algebra Two or Math Three. It's like, ah, yeah, you do, and let's have your mom come in and talk to me about it too. You know, it's like, because that's just too important to be something that you're just having a hard day doing.
So part of it is changing that conversation where it's like, you want choice.
Yeah.
If you want choice.
Yes. You want to have access to all the options.
Exactly.
You might not want to now, but you might want to six months after you graduate.
Oh, my gosh, I taught juniors, you can imagine. And then going, what did I do?
My son was like, oh, my friends are going away to college and I screwed up.
And you have such a high rate of kids that go to college too. I mean, it's like seventy-five, I think, percent that go. So even if they don't think they're going, they're going. You know, sometimes they get out there in the real world and.
They don't want. They don't want to work for more than fifteen dollars an hour.
Thank you.
This one is an interesting. This one is an interesting one. This one is a four-year, and let's start at the math, because the math has a really strong sequence. Um, it's a cohort, so this is ninth grade starting in seventeen, eighteen. And then tenth grade in eighteen, nineteen. Eleventh grade in nineteen, twenty, and on, so they're going math one, math two, math three, you can see how some of the numbers drop off. Not a whole lot, it's a strong sequence, that yellow. So that cohort is going down both of the high schools, it's a four-year view. Okay, the physical science is what your kids are taking in ninth grade. Which kind of limits what they get to, because they go physical science, biology, and you can see both high schools, they, they really stop after that biology. They don't go much past that, so it's only until after chemistry when they get into the advanced sciences and take AP science, so by taking that physical science in ninth grade, they rarely get to those AP classes there in the twelfth grade. We won't get into the G elective and the D elective, or do you want me to?
Yeah.
No. I was going to say, there were, there was some there, um, your A through G should go up this year just because of what that physical science was labeled in as far as whether it was a G elective or a D science, so it should go up this year. Based on that, but having physical science in the ninth grade year just limits where they can go. Because going physical science, biology, chemistry, and then they only have their their senior year to take an AP or advanced science. This is a one-year slice of the same. That was a four-year slice, this is a one-year slice. And it just shows where there is no college prep. So it shows, you can see, when kids are not taking college prep courses, you can see that the yeah, the ugly kind of beige color, you guys are not that good. So it's about fifty, and it's about the same numbers at both, um, both of the high schools, about fifty-eight percent, a little over half of the kids are not taking it their senior year. Just under that, their junior year, about forty percent their junior year. Does not make their, um, transcripts the strongest there. And math still is about the same at both of their schools too.
And how does that compare to statewide average as far as junior year and senior year taking time?
June, junior years is, both of those are under. Because most schools now are having a three-year science requirement, they're bumping up to the three-year science requirement. And I think we're going to get to yours in just a minute as far as your grad requirements, because you have the additional. I'll do this one, I think, then we hit the grad requirements.
Okay, yeah.
Um, this is a study that was done two thousand and four on longitudinal data, the NELLS thing. He found, and he's done like four studies before this, for every course, why should I take advanced math and science? For every course, algebra two, trig, pre-calculus, which would be math three and higher, every single one of those courses increases cumulatively seventy-three percent your chances of completing college, graduating from college. And in science, it's biology, chemistry, and physics, each one of those forty-five percent increase your odds forty-five percent from graduating from college. And effects are even stronger for Latinx groups. So it was like, why should I take math or science, it's like, here's one reason right here. In fact, I was talking to some of the students at one of the schools and she was saying, no one says why we have to take advanced math or science, I'm like, I have a reason. It's like, why doesn't anybody tell us that? I can tell you, she goes, now I can tell my sister.
So then you're saying that we, we, do we have a choice in, in giving physical science as a, as a freshman, um, mandatory class?
It's part of your graduation requirements, that would take some time because your science teachers are pretty well wedded to that, so that would be a process.
But then we would have a choice? Where, when would they have?
Most schools start with biology.
Would they have physical science?
Why'd you speak that, Tony?
Yeah, I mean, for my transfer school, usually they start with biology, um, chemistry, then to the um, but NGSS, which kind of wrote that out. But, um, I mean, really can start with any course, science course. But physical science at the high schools, as far as it's something I've seen is just here or, or been here for a while.
So can, can freshmen opt to take biology instead of physical science? No?
They can.
Honors bio.
I think that can.
Yeah, honors.
Yeah.
They can, they can take a test and get honors.
That's right.
Yeah, I can only.
But I think only like two percent are in there.
Eighteen.
Nine percent at one school and
Oh, five.
Seven percent at another school. But all the, all the other, ninety-one percent at one school and eighty percent at the other school are in physical science.
It's even on your slides there, thirty-two taking biology their freshman year, at Casa Grande. Forty-seven at Pedaluma High.
Yeah, so. Very, very few, and it's some tests that they have to take. Um, graduation requirements. The two years, and then you have the additional math or science. This is A through G column, the last column, this is yours, and it matches up pretty well if you put that additional math or science on the math. And then it matches there. Science is usually kind of good if you have the three years, but that's okay there. Where it falls here is the world language, visual and performing arts or CTE, because they have to take one year of that for your graduation. A through G says two years of the world language and one year visual and performing. That's not really holding up the kids as much of the math and science. And then this is the sample education plan from both the schools to be competitive. What the kids would take each year, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. Which is great unless you're a non-traditional student or a student actually, what we were just talking, are to be really competitive. You have biology in ninth grade, chemistry in tenth grade, and then you can take your lab science and AP sciences there. Sorry, that got slipped in, Tony. Or integrated one, two, because that's NGSS, so that's just a different way of, um, combining the physical and life sciences in there. But if you're a student with an IEP or an English learner and you have ELD in that bottom one, to get access to world language. Hard to get that. Hard to get that, there's some creative ways to do it, but it's hard to get that. Here's the one I think we were talking about earlier, about some of the systemic, um, roadblocks with the prerequisites. For some of the different classes, like the chemistry as far as a minimum grade of C in math two and biology. I don't know if I'm saying it correctly. And all the maths having C or higher to go to the next level. There's a thing called validation, that if you get a D in one year of math and you go to the next one and you get a C, it makes it, that's not being employed right now.
Same for languages. Same for languages as well.
Yeah, as you say, it's the same for languages too in math.
Maybe this question will for Tony or for Matthew, um, so I thought we had open access. So how does this play into that, right, if a student wants to?
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Oh, you can't hear me? Oh, sorry, my microphone wasn't on, um. I don't know if this question for maybe Matthew or Tony, because I know that we have open access in the district, but then I'm seeing these prerequisites, so how does that come into play if a student wants to opt into a class, but they don't meet the prerequisites?
I don't think we have open access.
We do have open access.
Well, maybe you say we do.
Now, in my conversations I've had with the school, it seems like there is open access, like there is an understanding that if a kid wants to take a course, like they can. So I don't know, it's some of the media, some, some, for some reason, some kids are, you know, having some regulations that are required, but um, I think there's some differences that kind of need to kind of straighten out and make sure that, um, it's consistent across our second year. Based on what you guys might have seen. Doesn't seem consistent with some of the conversations I've had, so I think it's something that we need to kind of work on.
Please say that again.
So when we talk about.
So when we talk about open access, you know, and I know Matthew and I have had many conversations about, about this, even with some of the administrators, is a student wants to take a course, they, there's nothing that should prevent them from taking a course, we would always want to provide families with the right information to make sure that they understand if the course will be challenging for them based on some data that we might have, but it's never something that we would say determines whether they take it or not. In my conversations with schools and counselors, I think I want to say we had a meeting with some of the counselors and talked about do students have open access, and it, it was conveyed to me that, you know, there's, that had, that's not, it hasn't been, hasn't been an issue. So if this data is saying that there are some prerequisites, then I think we need to get some clarity on, on that when, on a systematic level, or maybe it's, you know, a few people that are making prerequisites and it's not something that is common throughout, and it's a greater conversation, I think we need to get more clarity on.
Especially if, if you're seeing different prerequisites between the same course at a different school.
So what happens if you fail or get a D in physical science? As a freshman, you can't take biology. You take physical science again? That doesn't seem, so then you're completely out of whack.
It says one semester of physical science, maybe you get a a B the second semester, I don't know. Because it just says one semester with a D or better.
Oh. That might be that, what you were talking about, where you, if you get a C and want to, and make it up.
Doesn't work for science except for calc state and chemistry.
Okay. Throw that idea.
Used to. It changed about twelve years ago, ten years ago. The next two slides are just some of the characteristics that are present at the different schools, this is Pedaluma High School. And a review of about a third of the transcripts from twenty-twenty-one grads. This was what resulted, going through as far as A through G and who had shortened days as seniors. Who attended Santa Rosa Junior College for dual enrollment at all during their, um, career was thirty-eight percent of the sample. And who attended as a senior, twenty-seven percent for an average of thirteen credits. Thirty-two percent of them had a T A class, or they were enrolled for an average of three semesters. And then student missing A through G because they weren't enrolled in the sections were eleven percent. Um, students missing A through G because they got Ds or Fs was eleven percent. And then student missing A through G because of both, they either weren't scheduled in the course or they got Ds or Fs was twenty-six percent.
For the shortened days, um, did you look at zero period, for example, I junior and senior year technically had shortened days, but I had zero periods, I was still taking a full six.
No, it was, it was shortened day, it was numbered classes.
Okay.
And then this is just all the same thing at Casa Grande to a hundred and eleven students, so it was about a quarter there because they had a larger graduating class. So seventy-seven percent with the shortened day, thirty-two percent attended, um, Santa Rosa. Twenty-six percent as seniors. Eleven percent had a human interaction waiver, fourteen percent had a two A class. Again, twelve percent missed A through G because of not being scheduled in, thirteen percent because of Ds and Fs. And twenty-one percent because of both. That was just a way of going through it and also learned a whole lot about the school just by going through a hundred transcripts too.
Did you find why they weren't being scheduled into these classes?
I'm sorry.
Did you find why they weren't being scheduled into these classes?
We asked some questions. It seems that students get a lot of choice.
So they're opting not to and they're just?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of a culture of.
Yeah, and especially like if they were. Yeah. And, um, if they were halfway through the class and they didn't like it, they were, were allowed to change out of it.
I was allowed to.
Very different philosophy than what I have.
Yeah, from my house.
Fifteen-year-olds don't get choice, my high school. These are just, um, random transcripts that were drawn. Latina male, white male, all the way down, you can see their GPA is over here, the number of semesters in A through G, A history, you need four to be eligible, the student had five. English language arts, you need eight, the student had eight. You need six under C for math, the student had three, which is why it's bright pink. You need four, the science says six, all the way across, so you can see which ones they're deficit in by the pink, and then how many semesters are short. They're short five over here, my eyes are going back. Um, and they did not meet A through G, so these are all students who did not meet A through G. Um, and some comments over here, he had a D in math two, so he didn't go into math three. C is in Spanish one, but he didn't go into Spanish two. So that was just comments here, just about the different reasons why students didn't meet, didn't meet A through G, and they're from either, either or high school, I'm not calling out which high school.
So for example, that one, two, three, four, fifth, fifth one down, labeled Latina female. The only thing holding her back is one visual performing arts class. So she didn't, she didn't meet A through, did not meet A through G, but she would have met A through G if she had one more visual performing arts class.
Did you read the comment?
Oh, D in art, second, oh, gotcha.
Second semester of twelfth grade.
Twelve, three.
That's one that I scream when I read.
So the one right above it, a four-point-oh student who missed out on a second year of Spanish.
Because they weren't scheduled, those are the ones that.
And that one with a four-point-oh.
What, what do you mean by was not scheduled?
Yeah, and with a four-point-oh, might have taken Spanish at Santa Rosa and chose not to put it on her transcript. Or his transcript, I'm sorry. Um, that is a possibility, there's no way to know from the transcript.
I see that our student board member has a question in the chat, do you mind?
I'm sorry.
Um, our student board member, she's remote, looks like she has a question in the chat, which I cannot read from here.
It says, I don't know if you can hear me?
I can hear you.
Why is there more male representation than female representation?
It was just a random poll.
That's a good question.
Repeat the question.
She asked why there's, why, where there is more male representation than female representation on this.
It was a random poll, and then I did a random combination from ones, from, to combine the two schools. I can readjust it. Um, and I, then I did only the ones that didn't meet it, I think the females were the ones meeting it on the other ones, but um, it was totally random. I apologize.
It just really bothers me when I see not scheduled. Why not? Is my question.
Not scheduled and second semester Ds of senior year.
And these are all kids with pretty good GPAs otherwise, that would probably do justify.
Yeah.
And this was from what year?
This is from last year, the grads of twenty-twenty-one.
And this one.
Could be COVID-related.
But the one at the very bottom, like if he just had that second semester of visual and performing arts, he would have been A through G as well.
And then he had two semesters of T A. Which is not exactly A through G.
But it could be if we made it CTE towards being a teacher.
There you go. That's an interesting idea. It's a great idea.
Or they can stay in the second semester of visual performing arts. Because that was their senior year.
Right, right.
He's got a B.
Yeah.
A lot of kids take.
College and career readiness, this is what the state calls prepare. College and career indicator from the dashboard. And you can see most of them are from A through G and smarter balance, those have to be combined with another indicator. And it shows the number of students that met it under that, from the cohort of seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven with three-hundred-and-fifty-eight students prepared. With that forty-seven point three percent prepared, if you see on the left-hand side. If you break it down, fifty-seven percent students identified as white were prepared, thirty-two percent identified as Latinx were prepared.
That's a twenty-five percent gap. That's bad. Like that.
And your AP courses, you have a strong AP program, this is both high schools combined. It is almost within the ten percent of the Latinx, you have twenty-three percent. Latinx taking AP and thirty-four percent in the district. Getting more and more each year, there were also English learners taking it, there was a hundred and one unique ever. Getting more and more each year. There were also English learners taking it, there was a hundred and one unique ever English learners. ARFEP and EL who took AP classes.
That's great.
They did not all take AP Spanish language, I checked it out, so they were taking other courses besides AP Spanish language. And their numbers were getting stronger each year, so that was. Some good job on both Petaluma and Casa Grande doing recruiting as far as getting them into those courses. And AP, oh, that's the next one. AP Human Geography is a really good course. So as I said, speaking Spanish treated as an asset, yes, numbers in Spanish AP or AP Spanish languages are increasing, but I think I just talked about it. They're getting more and more students in there. AP Human Geography, great class to get kids interested in AP courses, I think one of the schools just started it. Not too long ago, but it's a fun class, kids really like it. Good ninth grade AP course. FASFA took a dip last year, but I thought this year, the twenty twenty one cycle is kind of the. Carryover from the pandemic year, I'm sure both Casa Grande and Petaluma are going to see a rise after that because they were growing up until then. That's a pandemic dip and I think that will grow right after that. I think all of you have seen this slide, I've heard comments on this. There is A through D should be the minimum graduation, this should be our floor. The. What I do want to say is is the comments that came on here that are. Rather, I would say disparaging or thing are a small loud population. They were not prevalent over there, they were small and loud, so there was lots of this A through G should be the minimum. The junior high planting the seeds for college, it was not throughout the whole. And I think I can consider on another one there too. And this is what we talked about, I think earlier about Santa Rosa. Being excellent, excellent junior high, but kids need to be educated, they need to go in with a plan because. You have a hundred high school graduates that go to Santa Rosa, it has a seven percent transfer rate. So seven for kids transferred to Sonoma State. Eighty one percent graduate per transfer student, that's six kiddos that walk across the stage with their bachelor's degree. Those hundred grads go straight to Sonoma State, it has a seventy percent grad rate for first time freshmen, lower than for the transfer student. Seventy graduates with their bachelor's degree, it's just the odds are greater. Now, there's lots of situations, I don't have the nuanced conversation, lots of situations, so Santa Rosa is excellent, excellent J C. We know that, and they have that program now that guarantees the transfer. M R O E, I think it is or whatever it is. And the kids just need to be educated, we considered it before, it's a nuanced conversation, they need to know how to read the catalog, they need to know that, it's just a nuanced conversation. They just need to know their options.
Well, and just going back to the other slide, like you were saying, this isn't. A lot of them, but I think even if it is only one or two or whatever percentage, it's still leading the students to that next outcome. Only seven versus seventy out of a hundred graduating. So I do think that does need to be acknowledged that that's what our students are hearing and those are the attitudes. And then behaviors of some of our staff.
Dangerous if they don't have a college graduate at home to influence them or anything if they're first time. I agree. I also came from a district like that and high school like that and I saw it change. So I know, I know that it can be done.
Can you see that from here?
I cannot, Matthew, can you read that out? Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I don't see those.
Maybe, let me see here.
I think I can, okay, go for it.
So, hey Malaya, Malaya said here, in response to the not scheduled comments. As a student, I've noticed that there is a lot of confusion. With what is expected and not much checking in on how people are doing. It's almost as though there is not enough guidance for the amount of choice students are given.
That concurs with.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Malaya.
Great point.
That's why we have student form.
This is from teacher surveys as far as. How many students do you believe can successfully graduate U C C S U eligible? All and most was twenty seven percent. And then how many students' parents do you think want them to graduate from University of Congress graduation? All and most was thirty five percent. Two hundred and eighty two staff members took the survey. So there's some of your belief systems there too that come out. The survey is designed to get the belief systems out because the belief system is under the iceberg, that iceberg that we show with systems, that's where we need to get to.
Absolutely.
But we changed that with with getting the outcomes. Yeah, and this one again was over seventy percent of your grads enroll in college, so we were perplexed by hearing some of those comments. And the area around. Cherry Valley is like the highest four block area in the state with twenty five year old graduates. Twenty five year olds that have bachelors from college, bachelors are higher in the whole state. That four block area around there, yeah. I know, I'm like, okay, that's the highest area with twenty five year olds with a college degree or higher. Sixty one percent of seniors at Casa Grande take at least one AP test. You know, and all the interviews that we had with with students and with parents. Who were actually staff members, but we got them as parents, said how important college was.
Except for the small but vocal group that was anti-college.
Yes, it was a small but vocal.
Could you, what do you mean by small vocal?
They expressed their opinion quite often in the survey. Occasionally in the focus groups, but it was more often in the anonymous survey.
Was it more along the lines of not everyone needs college or more along the lines of not, our students aren't equipped for college?
More not everyone needs college. And not always in a nice way.
Sure.
The rest of the survey wasn't always nice.
Got it.
But it was anonymous, you know, it didn't come up so much when you're face to face. Casa Grande is the one school that has a national clearinghouse and the National Student Clearinghouse. Gets your data from your high schools, gets your exact student data and matches it with where they are in a college. So you get exact data on every student. Or just about every student that's in, I think ninety eight percent of the colleges across the country, it's pretty amazing. So the data that we're going to see is just Casa Grande. That we have in the past ten years of grads. Sixty five percent of the past two thousand and forty three grads over the past ten years went to Santa Rosa. Six percent Sonoma State, six percent Cal State Chico, and then the rest, you can see our variety of.
Do we know what percentage graduated?
We can see that.
And is this, this is a percentage of students who went to college where they went to college?
Percentage of graduates.
Percentage of high school graduates.
Yeah.
Okay.
Percentage of high school graduates. Yeah. These are the, the, where they went to college, we're going to get to the graduations still, we're still leading up to that. God, hold on just a little bit. The green are the students identified as Latinx and that bluish purple, which you guys have black and white pronounced, right?
Their colors.
The blue and purple are students identified as white. The darker line is the four year colleges, the lighter one is the two year colleges. You can see that four year Latinx is like gradually moved up over the time, it's gone from like eighteen percent to twenty one percent in twenty eighteen. I think twenty eighteen was the last year they uploaded data, so that's the last year we have. I think Tony's getting it from the county soon, right? The county is going to provide it for both your schools and concurrently, so you'll get this, this has some really good reports in it each year. And you don't have to to run, I did some manipulation with it to get some stuff out, but they have some preprinted PDFs in it that are great. So. It looks like this jump, this two year and jump from Latinx, it looks like the jumpstart Santa Rosa really helped them. As far as more students are going to college with that. It could have been that fewer schools, fewer students identified as white are going to four year because of that and more are going to two year because of that. I don't know if that's the reason. But there's a decline in students identified as white going to four year and an increase in them going to two year. This is a decade of Casa Grande students. This is their senior enrollment. Three thousand two hundred and thirty, four year college nine hundred and eighty went. Two year college one thousand four hundred and twenty five, out of that, here's your college graduates. So thirty one percent of all high school graduates in the past decade graduated from college. Fifty percent of those are white, thirty percent, seven percent are other, thirteen percent identified as Latinx. Down here, you can see some of the degrees that they got. I will say, your students, when they get to college, they're like enoyizer bunnies. Or Casa Grande, they just go, 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 they don't take break years, they don't take anything off, they go from one to the other to the other. There's three medical doctors, one doctor of physical therapy and four lawyers that are students identified as white. There's some more other doctors in the other ethnicities, but I mean, that's within the past ten years, forty master degrees, sixty bachelors. The Latinx students, a hundred and eighty one, thirteen degrees, there's nine masters, a hundred and seventy two bachelors, U V As. Almost all those masters under the Latinx students were teachers. Which says something for the education that they got because usually they'll become teachers if they got good education.
And we need them.
This is again the vulnerability study, it added in the achievement. In there and it did not change order, so at that point. We say that demographics are influencing this and determining outcomes. Because it didn't change when we added in any of the achievements outcomes there, so it's still just based on, yeah, comes up, we saw earlier. One last thing, we're going to look at match districts to Petaluma City schools. So what we do is we look at demographics compared to Petaluma Cities. So we found Temple City, which is in Southern California, Novato, which is pretty close to here, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I tried to find some that were at least somewhat close, Morgan Hill. And then Newport Mesa, which is a lot bigger, except for when you look at their demographics down here. They're really, really close to you. So you're the one in the yellow, this is the free and reduced lunch, thirty nine percent. And Newport Mesa is right there. Your EL is right here, Newport Mesa is the same exact one at twelve percent, and the others have higher than that. Unduplicated pupil count, forty one percent, see Newport Mesa is exactly forty one percent. Latinx numbers and white numbers are going to be a little different there. So we wanted to find some that were demographically. Close to you so we could compare S P A C and some other outcome measures there. So S P A C for students identified as white on English language arts, right in the middle, sixty nine percent. Students identified as Latinx for yellow, right in the middle. Math, students identified as white, right in the middle. Students identified Latinx for math, right in the middle. Right in the middle of all those districts. So let's look at the four year cohort graduation rate. It's still pretty close, they're eighty eight, eighty nine for Morgan Hill. Temple City goes up, Temple City still has a little bit different demographics. The other ones are still within five percent there. But then we go down to the A through G. This is where you are going to be. That's. That's where you belong, that's your premium education rate. Given all your other measures of achievement, your AP, and I said it before, your AP, your S P A C, all your other outcomes. This is where you are. And I know there's a lot on A through G, I think you said it earlier, Joanne, but that's the, that's one of the end of journey measures. The elementary comes up to that, it gets into, home kids up to grade level, they go grade level, grade level, grade level, it's not like compounded interest. Because otherwise, if they're not at grade level when they leave there, then that interest compounds or that gap compounds and compounds and it compounds and it compounds. You have to get them at grade level and keep them at grade level on and on and on, because it's end of journey. That A through G, and A through G, I think is the best measure of it.
So what you're, what this, I mean, what I'm looking at this graph here where our, you call them comparative, comparative districts. Very similar until you come to the A through G rates where we're significantly like twenty one, twenty. Ish percent below our comparative districts. Is that right, Dr. John, when you say sixty five, we should be sixty five.
Yeah, near sixty five center, easy. That's.
So do we know that these districts are districts that don't get concentration fund? Do we know if they're funded in the same way with their L T F F funding?
It's a great question.
Pretty much so, because on the unduplicated pupil count, that's your.
It's about, they're about the same, so that would mean that they probably are funded similarly.
Pretty similar.
Yeah, unduplicated count's going to be fifty five, well fifty five percent, and all of them, when I look at them, they're all under fifty five percent, so they went, none of them were. None of these districts received concentration fund.
Yeah, and that's why I use the unduplicated pupil count there too, just.
Does anyone know where Temple City is?
Temple City is down off the six oh five, it's in LA County. It has a little higher Asian population.
I mean, I'm just speculating why we might be on the short end of A through G. You know, we, we live in a town that has a lot of opportunities for employment outside of college education. In agriculture and other areas, whereas these other places don't.
I wish that Newport was very high.
There's more of a sense of urgency. Felt in LA County schools. Is that, I don't know how else to say it.
Why did you say?
More a sense of urgency or more of a pressure put on it? Tony, you've worked there, you've been a high school principal there.
Yeah, it, it seems more. The, the, the urgency to close the gap, the opportunity gap, the skills gap. Achievement gap is much more prominent because. At least in where I worked, it was predominantly like hundred percent Title One schools and predominantly underserved students, like. It was glaring that there was a lot of deficits that needed to be fixed. So it was just something that was a more, just a more sense of urgency and a desire to. Wrap around the problem and try to solve it because it was just so big and the gaps were so large compared to other places, so.
So when you were talking with teachers or staff, you felt like there wasn't the same sense of urgency to close these gaps? Because I mean, we feel like they're pretty prominent, which is why we had to do this study.
And we don't necessarily bring up the gaps to them, it's the same, same questions. No, they, they were working very hard and I won't say that, very diligent to do that.
It's because we're giving you the, the data after, at the time we're asking them questions just about. You know, what's going on in school. If they were, once we present this, they're going to see the gap. But they're not looking at it in that way. Because they are working hard, they are, it's the system that they're working in that they don't see it. They're not able to see it.
So. So these, I don't know how many pages this is. Ninety pages. Eighty of them are dealing with, are describing our gaps. How did you get from there to diagnosis of the causes and where the systemic issues are? Where the behavioral issues are, where the attitudinal issues are?
Because I started where the gap was and kept digging and digging and digging and threw out a lot, it weren't, actually not, we just need the whole team. We would throw out a lot of things that weren't valid. And so we'd keep digging and make sure that it was triangulated, that we had three different sources that verified it.
Can you give us an example of how that works?
Well, first we found out which one was the predominant gap that we were going to look at, and that was the Latinx and the white. So then we started looking, was it just in high school, usually we'll start in high school. And that's what we started, we started looking, did it go back to junior high, did it go back to elementary school? And then was it just in academics, was it in other areas? Were there comments that talked about that or not? Did we see it in the classrooms? Did we see it in all the classrooms? Which classrooms did we see? Was instruction supported? I mean, we, we asked all kinds of questions and then we come together with the teams and talk with that. We did not see it in, in some of the classrooms and then we asked other questions. Okay, what's the data there? Is the data supporting that? Do we have to look somewhere else to see that? Okay, what's the data there? Is the data supporting that? Do we have to look somewhere else to see that? So it, it's an iterative process. It goes round and round and round and round. And there was about twenty, about eighteen people involved with the different study teams and the different processes that went around. There's lots more than ninety pages, I think.
Yes, I want that. I mean, honestly, I appreciate this, but we need about, you know, those fifty other pages that get to what are the causes of this? And then the next twenty-five pages of what you suggest that we do based upon your experience of doing this in many districts. Can we expect that?
Well, there are some how-tos in here.
Yeah, but I want to, I want to hear.
You want more details?
I want, I want the methodology, the, you know, I want to know how we came to understanding, here are our systemic issues and the things that we can do to fix it, like articulation of standards of things. Here are some attitudinal or behavioral things that could change in terms of hate assessment or whatever it is. But I, I would, we need that next level. We knew coming in tonight and before last week that we had gap issues. I mean, it's in our dashboard. It's for everyone to see. This certainly details those gaps with a lot more detail and I appreciate that. But we, I think what we really want is why or do these gaps exist? So that we know what steps we can take to, to narrow the gaps, to get rid of them.
Right, because I mean, we mentioned previously, let's wait for the equity study before we start addressing the attitudes. And so, like, yeah, these are all things that we've seen. I mean, there are some new things in here too, like light bulbs as well. But, yeah, I don't know how this is going to help us with the next steps with our act, like in terms of like our diversity and inclusion, like the inclusion part as well. And like our campus climate, like the, the culture of campuses, the racism, just like all of those things, I think is what I was looking for.
Some of these comments.
We need.
But they're only two comments.
We need diagnoses, not just a description of our symptoms here.
I mean, we can look to see that there's some students that are being excluded from A through G. Some students are being excluded from courses due to the systems that are in place. So we can, we can, you know, say that there may be some, you know, systemic or institutional biases that are happening because of the systems creating those things unintentionally. You know, with all good intentions, we're trying to do the best we can. And because we created a system with good intentions, but without really maybe the research behind making sure we're doing it appropriately, we ended up with some institutional biases that led to, you know, that contributed to maybe some of the beliefs that have happened. So recognizing that, we can say, okay, well, what are the system changes that we can do to eliminate those biases? Or maybe some of the racisms that we see within the system, not only shaping the system, but also the hearts and minds. You know, the system works well when people believe in those systems and can help change and push the systems where it should to help all of our kids. And so those things can help, maybe the state can also help just recognize what we see, but also then now say, okay, what conversations do we need to have on a cultural level, on a, you know, school cultural level so that we can help expedite the systems that we need to put in place?
So you feel like by presenting this data and changing the system, so that's going to change the attitudes? And I'm only asking because I've never thought about it in like that.
Well, I, I can give you an example, like when I was a principal and, you know, we were at sixty-nine percent graduation rate. We had, I want to say sixteen percent of the students were A through G. We had a myriad of, you know, systematic deficiencies. And it was the belief because of that, that students couldn't succeed. We wanted to bring in the IB program and the belief was, why, why would we bring in the program? These kids can't achieve. They can't pass the classes now in regular classes. Why would we think that they could pass an IB class, let alone an AP class? And it was the data that we were seeing that was also perpetuating the feelings that people had. It was just validating it. So it was in part saying, well, let's just change the way we think. Because if we don't change the way we think, we'll never have the opportunity to really give the system a chance that we want to fix, right? It's, and there's a lot of research around belief. And just believing in our kids can help change their trajectory in their educational career. So they kind of go hand in hand. And it isn't like we do this first and that. It's sort of like kind of moving it together. But when, when students started to achieve, when we had more students pass the IB or receive the IB diploma than some of the more affluent schools. And they said, oh, wow, these kids in a, in a school where a hundred percent of them are Title I are exceeding beyond anyone else's belief, they start to change and start to embrace it. And they started to say, well, maybe things can change. And what we asked was, you don't have to believe, but just don't stand in the way because this is where we're going. It's okay to stand off to the side and just be skeptical. It's okay. But we're, this is how we're going to move the school. This is how we're going to move our kids. This is how we're going to believe in them and this is the systems we're going to place to make sure that they can succeed. And it's okay to, to be skeptical. It's okay to even, you know, just to watch. But just don't stand in the train that we're on because this is what we're, what we're trying to do. It's the right and true adjusting for the kids that we're trying to help.
Did you find that the people that were skeptical, that didn't stand in the way, but stood to the side, changed?
Some of them did, yeah, absolutely. You know, when we started seeing the success of our students, it became a sense of pride. And in a sense where it was sort of like, yeah, we're in, you know, in a place where everyone discounted us. But now, you know, our kids are achieving. The district was, you know, AP District of the Year because of the systems that were put in place at the district level that permeated down to the, the school set level as well.
Did you see the gaps closing in?
Yeah, the gaps, you know, there's, there's never a point where we are where we want to be a hundred percent of the time. I mean, but the gaps closed. I mean, we went from a sixty-nine percent graduation rate to over ninety percent. Now, and my third year as a principal, there was a hundred percent of African-American students graduated. A hundred percent of our students with special needs graduated because we changed the system. And there were some people that didn't believe that that could happen, but they didn't stand in the way. They just said, okay, well, well, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll see. And once, once they saw it, they saw that, oh, yeah, you know, anything is possible. So I think we're in a situation where we're seeing what we need to see, but we're also having the opportunity to really, to really do something about it in a place where we can, you know, lead in Sonoma County. If we just make some changes that we need to make to tweak some things that we need to tweak and, and inspire everyone along, along the way. And I think if we do that, you know, there's no reason why Petaluma can't be the beacon for the rest of Sonoma County and maybe the state of California. It's just a matter of whether or not we choose to believe we can. And if everyone's on board with that, you know, I, you know, I'll, I'll do whatever it has to take for us to get there.
We're on board, Tony.
We're on board, but I'm just looking for the what, like what needs to change.
Along the lines of what Tony just said, you know, I, I am asking you to give us clear indications of your diagnoses of the sources of, the sources of the problems that result in this ninety-page report. But at the same time, I also, you know, like what Tony was just describing about success, you know, we have examples of that. You, you highlighted how McKinley is not performing the prediction of what the state would say based upon this profile. You know, I would like a diagnosis of what's going right at some of our places too, that we can replicate across the district. How's our, how's our contract with, have we exhausted our contract already? You put all the work into making the diagnoses. I want to know what they are.
Yeah, you can do that.
Just that little bit more, well, maybe it's not.
Yeah, a lot of it more.
And, you know, one thing I want to say is that reading the LCAP, at least I think it was last year's LCAP, we, there was a lot of language around guidance alignment. And having quite found out what exactly we meant by it here, I know what it means where I've been. So it's just a matter of, we, we have some of the language of some of the things they've recommended. It's just really making sure that, you know, we, we, we look at it and see if it's something that we can do sooner than later.
You're saying, I think that's pretty much the end and I will get together what you need to get unless there's more questions.
It feels like the guidance alignment really is only going to help like secondary.
The guidance alignment.
Close the gaps for secondary, but what about for K through six?
Yeah, I do agree that I'd like to see how.
Like what are the recommendations?
From kind of there in kindergarten, it feels like there's two separate things going on and it's not.
Okay, no, it's not.
I mean, that's my own feeling about it, you know, these are persistent problems that we've had forever here. And so to change it is going to have to change tremendous amount of culture thinking work here, which I think people would be willing, I mean, I'm just saying that it seems like it, talking about systemic problem, it starts much younger.
Yeah.
It would start in the elementary school.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I didn't hear a lot about elementary yet.
It's the curriculum alignment piece.
The alignment piece, that's where it all starts.
At every grade level.
Was there any investigation of, you know, summer school, summer slide, you know, that is well documented to be associated with associate medical status? Did you find that as a cause?
We didn't find much summer school going on.
No, but summer slide in terms of, I mean, affluent parents are going to send their kids to enrichment camps while others aren't. Did you see any of that? Because that could tell us whether we need to offer summer school for low-income families.
Yeah, no, but there is some suggestions as far as summer school and getting Santa Rosa to offer world language on your campuses with support because you take that one summer school class and you meet your world language requirement. So in one summer, a student can meet that two-year requirement by taking that course, but they need support while we're doing it.
I'm, I'm talking about elementary school here.
Yeah, I think in elementary school, it starts with that alignment.
I mean, you're talking about the one or two percent, you know, it happens at TK.
Yeah.
And then it balloons to twelve percent. By the time they get to high school, it's too late.
Yeah.
So we know what are the causes of the gaps in TK that we can fix and a K.
And to make sure that they don't go in there. Yes, that's exactly where it needs to start.
Because every year, they fall for the.
Yep, no compounded interest.
Well, it's, it's like Katie brought up, our other student board member, a couple of weeks ago. It's like, I mean, we're saying, like, you know, we're going to have a common math assessments. We're going to have a curriculum alignment, but I don't know, that's enough. Like, how do you actually convince people who've seen this? I mean, you're saying that we've had teachers who've been over so long. How do you convince people who've been in this district fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years back? And who believe some of the negative things that were said in here? How do you convince them that curriculum alignment is going to, or I guess like it's about, I think it's more changing their teaching strategies or like Charlotte's like, why are the students, every single school except one, our Hispanic students are doing worse on all of these things? Like, we looked at this data two meetings ago. I just, I don't know.
We don't do it right away. It takes time, but you start, you start there.
I think you were saying the urgency, like, shouldn't we have the urgency, but then you're saying like, you shouldn't do it right away. It feels like that's not being urgent.
But you can't do it all at once.
Right.
You do that, you put the system in place first. Then you, once you get that system in place, that first year, then you start helping and doing all the specifics of the strategy and everything. But that system has to be there.
But even there, there's instructional agreements.
Yeah, but it's those agreements too. And you walk alongside them with the admin or we do that, we walk alongside them and support.
Teacher, teacher collaboration time.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I.
I heard, I saw a lot of the need to collaborate in a lot of those surveys.
Calibrate expectations and some reassessments. A lot of the work that we're talking about is, I mean, I'd like to see it as well, but it's not going to be.
But I'm seeing teachers ask for that alignment. Teachers asking for time to collaborate. And we.
And like, I was at school, like you talked about high school, but I was at elementary and we're the lowest performing school in the district. And as we went through it, we became the highest performing school. No one expected it because we put that system in place. And we followed through with it. We met together, but we worked for the team, grade level teams that were given the collaboration time to do it. And it's, it's just setting that. So we need to make it available and set up that structure for them so that they have it to be able to do it.
And so those grade level teams would be across schools, across.
Because that's, that's.
We have open enrollment, so there's, there's definitely.
But yeah, I mean, if we're going to do alignment, then you have to get all the third-grade teachers in the district talking to each other and collaborating and coming to decisions.
Yes, absolutely.
Not just at the school.
And you have some schools that are three-quarters of the way there as far as.
But how high is there Latinx population?
Where?
How high is there Latinx population?
For the schools that are there.
They're there.
Yeah, and they'd be great exemplars and helping out the others. As they, because they still need to calibrate. I mean, they just have the process, but they're, but they're just doing it at their school. It still has to be a district where's the floor.
So the systems that are applied in those schools would work at any other schools in order to make it.
But it doesn't go all the way around, just looking at the data, looking at where they need to bring the students up. So I mean, it's almost, like I said, three-quarters of the way there.
But that last, that last quarter is really important because it's, you're going to have.
Yeah.
Everyone together to agree, here are the, here's, here are the agreements. This is what we're all, this is our, this is our floor. Here's our expectation, minimum expectation.
Yeah. And this is the, the data where they, where they succeeded, where they need more support.
Thank you. A lot of work.
Yeah, we got, we got stuff to do.
Yeah, I know we can't.
I have my list.
Okay, good, because I, I know we can't make any decisions right now. It's not on our agenda. But I hope this is just, you know, we've, we've, we have shed a light on the problem. We need our next steps. We need to diagnose and then prescribe some, some action and that's what I'm moving forward to.
Before we leave, can we call on the two people that have their hands up?
Oh, okay. Is that why you did that, Dave? Like a hint? All right. Sal is here.
And Justin.
Let's, let Sal go first.
Same public comment policy. I'm not going to read it again. Go ahead, Sal.
Okay, thanks. Hi, Salandopoulos. They, he pronouns with the North Bay LGBTQIA+ families. So, yeah, just like a few different things. I think, like, as others have had, I guess, haven't had much time with the study. Appreciate, you know, certainly that, that PCS is looking into these disparities. But I, you know, I think a couple of things, like I was mentioned at the beginning, sort of of the, of the meeting. I was, I would say confused about the extent to which implicit or overt bias were addressed in the study as, as contributing factors. And, you know, I was, was kind of unsure about the, the, you know, kind of, yeah, I guess I want to learn more, I guess, about the approach of sort of centering, I guess, the, you know, student achievement as the driver of kind of like, you know, changing attitudes. I think there's, again, I think more there to discuss around implicit and overt bias. Was curious about whether there was any more clear data or focus, you know, available for, you know, outcomes for our Black students, API and other groups. And also noticed that there was no sort of inclusion or mention that I could see in the ninety-five pages, looking through it quickly of LGBTQIA+ students. I do remember, you know, giving a public comment in September, I think, when the study was kind of proposed or introduced, kind of, you know, kind of sort of highlighting a need for sort of some looking, looking at outcomes for that student population. And it sounded like that might be a possibility here. I understand that's a complicated thing in terms of state, you know, data, not including LGBTQIA+ students in the dashboard and stuff like that. It also creates the same issue with the LCAP, we know. But, and I know there are other sources of information, you know, other surveys that we look at for how those. we look at for how those students are doing, but I just thought it was kind of striking that that was not, just not, not included at all here that I could see. And that's it for the moment. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Sal.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Um, we did include the LGBTQBT, but we did not include it in the survey. We shadowed them and we collected data on them. We did not know how to actually put it out in the survey. As far as the up through junior high, there was not a difference as far as scores, there was not a difference as far as inclusivity in the high schools where it became more challenging. And when there was more, we got more feedback from them as far as not feeling part of the school and we had more feedback on grades, but we only still had seven in the sample. So to have seven in a sample, I couldn't put data as far as into the report. And that was the same thing with African Americans, there weren't more than 10. So to report them, there's some reported in the list or the S back with the large chart, but when there's under 10, the numbers just isn't valid to report. So I don't know if that answered all the way, but it's still, we have more qualitative data than quantitative, let me just say for LGBTQBT.
Okay, Justin? You're muted, Justin, I don't know if you're trying to talk. All right, let's move on to Jeannie Preitzel. We can come back to Justin later.
Yep, hi, sorry, that's my dog in the background.
No problem.
I have to say, I was quite disappointed at the lack of time and discussion regarding McDowell and what really felt to me, and I'm, you know, I haven't had time to really look through the study, but just a very simplified glossed over solution, which just seemed like, oh, yeah, curriculum alignment is going to fix everything here. And Sheldon, I appreciate you kind of pushing on that, and I, I really do hope there's some serious investigation into all of the elements and dynamics happening at that school and, and also really, really looking at what's going on with curriculum. You know, I, I've written you guys for the past five years or so regarding, you know, the detrimental effects of, of large class size and combo classes and the unbelievable challenges those pose on teachers who are teaching these kids with so many high needs students that, you know, we, we know they're, they're coming in with less prepared in many ways than a lot of our other kids. And I, I, I just, it's, it's really frightening to me to hear the conversation kind of hinting that, well, curriculum alignment is going to fix this, because I'm going to tell you right now, it's not. And if, and if you think, I'm not saying that's not a piece of it, but if, if you're thinking that this is all going to get fixed and, and we're going to bring these guys back up with just aligning to curriculum, then, then there's a huge disconnect here. And there was a lot of emphasis on the high schools and what's going on here, but, you know, we got to really keep in mind that this gap starts in TK and grows. And every obstacle that you throw at those kids when they're in elementary school just exacerbates that issue and the gap gets bigger. So I really hope there's some deeper discussion and investigation and considering a lot of the factors and some real solutions that we can look at in, in remedying this. And I also appreciate the conversation about summer school, too. I, I personally feel like that's something we've been doing for a long time in this district and we have never, ever looked at the effects of that or the data around it. We don't even know which kids have attended. And I know it's a lot of money that's been spent on that every year, so I really hope that in that, in that investigation and diving deeper into elementary, we can look at that as well.
All right, thank you. Let's go with Shereen. Oh, Justin, looks like he's back. Or not, Justin, are you there? All right, let's go to Shereen.
Am I on?
Yeah.
Sorry, well, first off, I accidentally raised my hand, but since, and then I was trying to figure out why they kept calling my name, because I just assumed there was another Justin, but I didn't look at my phone. I guess, Joanna, I would, my answer to your question about what do we need to do to really look at this stuff? I do, I do understand the curriculum alignment piece, but really what it is, is it's data. It's data to see where are our gaps? Yes, this shows us our gaps in terms of student achievement, but we need to see our gaps in terms, in terms of where students are scoring, where they're hitting certain target areas. And so we take that data and then we can analyze it. It's not used as a value, used evaluatively for teachers, but they can look at it, they can discuss it with each other and determine where do we need to beef up what we are doing in individual areas to really target what students are missing. So I know I'm a broken record in our principal meetings, we need data. I think the math annex information will be helpful, but I think that's just a start. We still need to look at English Language Arts, and we need to consider Common Assessments and every other piece of data we can think of. Thank you.
It's not only gathering the data.
All right, thank you.
Using it to inform teaching.
All right, looks like Shereen is next.
So I have a, I was taking notes, and I've got 12 questions or groups of questions. I'm wondering who I should send them to, because I feel like it's a little bit too much for me to say.
It's going to be more than your four minutes, Tony or Matthew?
Okay.
Also, Tony and Matthew.
Okay, cool.
Was that it?
Okay.
Do you want to ask, do you want to ask a couple of the Bernie ones, or at least one or two?
Well, I mean, what, the first one that I had was when they were talking about the nested system. I, my mind was just kind of reeling, trying to figure out, like, they were talking about having five sessions about going over data and I, like, when would those sessions occur? And how would we account for people who teach multiple levels, whether it's someone who has a split class at elementary or like, I, you know, if I'm teaching an English, some English nine classes and some English 11 classes or, you know, whatever. And also, would that just be for core classes? Because there are electives for which it might be impossible, because there might only be one class at a site or even one class in the district. So, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we can, first of all, how, how has that been done in other districts? Great to hear.
Great question. Absolutely, in elementary school, if you teach a combo class, you would, what we do when you put together the system, you make, you will make it so that it allows people to go to both sessions. So you're giving the time to the, to the teachers so that they can collaborate. So if you're part of a, you're teaching a one-two combo, you would go to the first grade group and you'd go to the second grade group. And you, you would work with both groups. So you work that out with the school, your team, how you would do that. If you're working in high schools, same thing, you would give them the time to go to both, you'd make it available for them. And they work it out with that team. But we help come up with that, the schedules and how you would do that. It, it depends, districts do it many, many different ways. They might have subs, which is difficult right now, we all know that. Sometimes you use in elementary schools and they use their time where they have their afters, their, like, after-school programs where they use those people, where they come and do a PE program and give release time. There's many creative ways to figure out how to do that, and we put our minds together and we figure it out so that we make it available to work so that the teachers can collaborate. Those are some ways of doing this.
I would be very interested, interested to see how that would work, because we have tried to do that a lot and we, it's very difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Carrie Bailey.
Okay, hi. So that was a lot to digest, and I feel like, like so many people have so many things that I kind of want to bring forward and, and discuss about the uniqueness of Petaluma and things that I feel like get missed in, in data grabs like this, like, for instance, the fact that we are a multi elementary school town. And so to what degree are we evaluating the students that are coming into our high schools that are contributing to gaps that we see at the high school level that are coming from schools that are outside of Petaluma City Schools' elementary school systems? And like, I didn't see that data, and are we tracking that data? And looking at, I, I appreciate the overwhelming concern for the A through G, you know, goal. And I think that you nailed it to some degree, that there, this is a community that has a long history of agriculture and, and blue collar-ness that is really under the surface of, of who we are. I mean, I'm third generation of this town, and I think that, you know, even this kind of conversation of placing such an emphasis on that being the goal as opposed to, you know, I don't know, that was, that was really hard to listen to, is that being like this overarching goal? As opposed to the part where there was the inequity of, with what's happening with the Latinx students and the, and the students who identify as white? I think that is a much more compelling thing to talk about as, as a district. And, and again, earlier on in the, in the conversation, you brought up the fact that sometimes the data is skewed by the amount of people or students in the, in the particular survey. And I saw some instances where you were pointing out disparities of 10% or something, which are based really on a one-student class choice, because some of these places have such a low student population. It just, it was hard to listen to some of it without being able to like jump in and have a deeper conversation about places where the data needs a broader lens or more, you know, descriptors. And I have to agree with Shereen, I know that we can get creative about finding ways to collaborate. And I agree that more collaboration is definitely a way to help deal with these, with these gaps. But as a district who, you know, runs on committee meetings and things of that nature and, you know, teacher SSTs and all of this kind of thing, I can't even imagine where I would find an afternoon that I'm not already booked and asking us to write subplans in order to do, I mean, it's, it is problematic and I know we can figure it out, I know we can think outside of the box, but I think it's, it's hard to, to hear suggestions that require, I don't know, more work and more effort. And, and perhaps what, what would be really nice is more, more days, just more days on the calendar and more days where we can do this that don't require us to do something that requires more work to figure out ways to help close the gap. I don't know, there's just so much to talk about here. And, I mean, I appreciate this, the beginning of this conversation, but that was, that was a lot to have to digest. So thank you for presenting it.
Thank you.
Good to start, thank you, thank you, Carrie.
All right. Next up is Sarah Seidman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for doing this. I want to take a moment and just say that it's been years that people have been talking about this, and I want to uplift every single one of you who put this forward and advocated for this and made sure that we could now have a baseline with which to work from. I also, so thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I recognize and understand that this is the very beginning, and now we have a baseline, and from here, there is so much more to do. I understand that this is quantitative data or, and we want qualitative data, because when you look at the Dream School, it says joy in learning, support for students, students' primary language cultures are publicly celebrated and honored, these kids, high standards and expectations. They're talking about grades, we're talking about college, that's important. It's the continuum that's important, and it's the student's sense of belonging and value in themselves that make them have, eventually live a, you know, a contented, happy, productive, for whatever their goals are, life. And I think that this with the Youth Truths Survey and our LCAPs all need to be synthesized together. I think that there's something about having those asterisks about, yes, we don't have very many Black students, yeah, there wasn't that many LGBTQI students in there. We still need to know what that data is, we still need to be able to look at it. It's not enough that there wasn't enough of them to be able to not have them be in this data, because they are still people that we are needing to look at. They are those students who are marginalized and who are pushed to the side, and having them not show up in this information is further marginalizing and further othering them. And if we are looking towards greater equity and inclusion, then all of the information needs to be in there. I appreciate that, I'm sure it is, I look forward to seeing all of it. I would love for there to be study groups for them to dive into. I imagine that it's going to happen on the district admin level. I know that you all have been poring over it, and it's hours and hours and hours of work. I know that it'd probably trickle down into the principals, and this is a long-term thing. I would love to be involved in these kinds of conversations. I'm sure there are other people in our community that would as well. I'm really excited about being able to see how, from TK all the way to 12, we can see how to be able to get there. Because even with just this data, if this is college cred, you know, it looks like everything is pointing towards college readiness, which is very important, but not everything. As we all know, it's not the most important thing. It is one portion. So in order to get there, in order for the kids to be able to take biology or be able to be in Spanish, they need to be prepped in junior high, they need to be prepped in, in K, in TK, all the way through. So I would really love to be able to dive into and see how we're going to incorporate all of these things. I really appreciate all of your questions on the board members. Every single one of you have been talking amazing questions. I love that you're all up in it. I really want to see all of our students be represented in this equity study, because otherwise, it is not truly equity, it's just a study of how we're getting to college. And I really appreciate all the work that was put into this. This is incredibly deep work, and I look forward to seeing more of it. Thank you, all of you. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Next up, we have Kelly Matarri.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent. So, first of all, I want to echo what Sarah said, and I just appreciate the time and energy that is going into this work and the fact that this district and the board are centering this work of educational equity and justice. And I, and I was really struck by kind of this push and pull between, we need to make changes to our system, and we also need to shift beliefs, and which kind of comes first, chicken or the egg? And I just want to say that, to my way of thinking, that it's really a both and approach that needs to be taken. There are concrete changes that can and should be made to remove barriers in the system as it currently exists. And those changes could well lead to impacts or impact students in ways that shift those students' outcomes, and those shifting outcomes then lead to changes in beliefs and mindsets. And that's a fantastic force of action. And there is work that can and must be done right now to explore and shift the beliefs and mindsets that educators and, and all adults in our system currently hold about our students, our Black students, our Latinx students, our LGBTQ students and our disabled students, all students who've been marginalized by the system as it stands, right? Right now, there are things that we can do to explore and shift and change those mindsets. And we can't wait for one to do the other. We can't wait that mindset work to be done before we make changes, and we can't wait to change the mindsets by making changes to the system. We have to do them concurrently, and if we're doing it right, and we're doing it, not that there's one right way, but if we're doing it well, those changes will inform each other, those approaches will inform each other, we'll know better what changes to make when we're exploring our mindsets, and we'll better make changes to the system if we're being honest about how we're thinking and feeling about our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Next.
I said, I love it, Kelly. Come help us.
Right. She's with Sco. Yeah, she's amazing. Um, all right. Renee Ho.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um, I'm driving. I apologize, but my name is Renee Ho and my pronouns are she, her and ea. And I'm speaking on behalf of Amor Pratitodos in the community to help make our schools and community more LGBTQIA and gender inclusive. And I just want to start by wholeheartedly applauding the Petaluma City School Districts and all the folks within for doing this work. It's amazing. It's not easy, but it is so, um, literally life-saving. And thank you, Orenda, for all your detail, all your time and for also doing this work. One thing I want to note, um, is that earlier before the district chose to go with Orenda, um, myself and another participant from another organization spoke on behalf of what we noticed in their initial presentation that there was an absence of LGBTQIA plus anything and how they were going to go forward with equity, meeting equity needs. And we were assured that, that we would still get, you know, important data for that very marginalized group. And skimming through the 95-page document, and again, I said skim, I want to, you know, be honest, um, I did not read it all the way through. It didn't seem like there was any clear mention of LGBTQI plus students. Um, and I think that's really important to note because mirroring what Sarah said, if this is going to be a true equity data tool that we are really going to use, um, when, it's very important to note that there is one of the most marginalized student population groups that weren't represented. And I hear there were seven students shadowed. I can, without hesitation, name way more than seven students within the LGBTQI plus A community in one school, let alone the whole district. So we need, um, I think it would be very wonderful in the collaborative effort, um, one I'd be honored to be a part of, to find an assessment that can accurately give us the data we need. So these students aren't continually left behind. It, it almost seems like there isn't a tool yet out there possibly, um, that can do that piece. But the, the LGBTQI plus student group is always just maybe unintentionally, I will say, made invisible. And that's why there is such skyrocketing high mental suicide statistics with this community. So, um, with, again, much respect, much gratitude and much love always, genuinely, um, I really would like to be a part of working together. So this very marginalized group will not continually, um, be invisible because they're one of the groups that needs, um, a lot of, a lot of help, a lot of support, and they're not mentioned barely at all within this equity study. So I just wanted to note that again with respect and gratitude, um, genuinely. So I hope that you all and me and anyone else who wants to, I mean, I want to not just note something and not take action. I want to be part of the answer. And that's one thing I really appreciate from all this discussion and you amazing, all of you to bring this to the district is it's bringing discussion. And that's, I think, along with data, even though there's absence for that one marginalized group, discussion is what's going to help us get to where we need to. So I just want to end again by genuinely thanking you all for this and hoping that together we can come up with a way to support all groups, especially those most marginalized. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you. Um, Patty Lunibus. Looks like last commenter.
Hello. Thank you. Um, thank you for all the work, uh, this evening. That was a lot of information to take on and I, I really appreciated it being parsed out like that. I did appreciate seeing, um, special education represented on there and students with, um, IEPs. Um, as a special educator in the school district at the elementary level, I do want to echo some of the things I heard people say about, um, focusing on elementary level, not just secondary level. And I also want to consider, invite the opportunity to look at, uh, relationship between general education and special education and looking at that as a potential partnership in supporting those students with IEPs. Um, I do see many situations where there is, um, unintentional marginalization in that area. And I'm really hoping to be part of, um, a solution in that. And also to look at my partners who work on, uh, tier two supports. I really feel like it's not just, um, it's not just program alignment. It's also looking at what kind of supports do we have for these marginalized students, bilingual resource teachers, reading specialists and, um, the, uh, it would be nice to see math specialists come back too and give supports to these students. So I appreciate the work. It was good information. I'm glad I was here to listen to it and I look forward to being a partner moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else have any closing comments or questions? All right. Okay. That meeting adjourned.